All right, Greg, go ahead.
Welcome, everybody, to the Town of Shasbury's regular Select Board meeting, tonight being Monday, April the first. Tonight, we're starting -- first item on our agenda tonight is a public hearing regarding a zoning bylaw amendment. It is the one that the Planning Commission has developed regarding open space subdivisions. This is something that the Planning Commission has been working on for over the last several years and has had a lot of feedback from various members of the community. So they've had the hearings, I believe, that they've -- that they needed to have at the zoning or at the Planning Commission level and now have brought it to, as was required by state law, to bring it to the Select Board, in front of the Select Board, again, to have a hearing and have the community have an opportunity to comment on it. So with that said, I'm going to turn this over, the discussion or the basic covering of what's going on with it, to the Chair of the Planning Commission, Chris Williams.
Thank you, Greg. The--
Maybe we can come up so people can hear.
All right. I can do that, Carl. The impetus of the -- for the changes in the bylaw, which exists presently in our zoning bylaws, open space subdivision, that is, was to take note of the fact that this had never been executed in Shasbury and to make it a little less prescriptive and to increase the density bonus by 5% to make it more attractive. So in terms of making it less prescriptive, the idea is that the individual lots would be less described in the table that goes with the bylaw and that it would give a developer the flexibility to configure them based on the parcel of land and that the parcel of land and the market, thinking that the market would prevent really hideous configurations from resulting from this where if you have no requirement for setbacks one lot from another, still, people don't want to live right tight against each other, and that's market forces rather than zoning that would control this. So the sense is that the Planning Commission, in its infinite wisdom, can't foresee every situation that would come up. In other words, land comes in lots of shapes and sizes, and what would be a configuration for one parcel might not fit a configuration that would work for another parcel. So the idea of allowing a little more flexibility in configuring the thing while holding the basic requirements the same, which is that the entire parcel has to comply with zoning setbacks, would allow a little creativity to design according to the site situation. So I don't know. I don't -- ask me a few questions here. I'm not sure what else--
The only -- the only issue that I saw that this was last discussed February 13th, Lon had said that he would fire off an email. Did he CC you on that? To Rob Wilmington, asking him just to take a look at the proposal. And then we got an email back.
I vaguely remember. It was a long time ago, Margie.
All right. Do you remember seeing anybody -- remember seeing this?
I don't.
Okay. I will make copies of it. I guess what I can do is read it aloud right now, or should I make copies right now?
Just read it aloud.
I'll read it right now.
Because it's fairly short.
Right.
If you just want to summarize as appropriate.
Yeah. In terms of legal compliance, I see two possible issues. First, the amended bylaw would exclude mobile home parks from open space clustered subdivisions. And then he refers to the appropriate section, Section 7622. I'm not sure of the rationale for that exclusion, and there are still -- there is at least some risks that it would run afoul of the anti-discrimination provisions of 24 VSA, and then he gives you the citation. If the deletion of mobile home parks from this provision would tend to exclude them from the community or make mobile home parks more difficult to cite than conventional subdivisions. So that's number one concern regarding mobile home parks. Second concern, the requirement of providing common land open for use in common by all lot owners at least raises the question of whether it might constitute, under some circumstances, a taking of property that requires just compensation or, in some particular circumstances, goes beyond the statutory authority.
Could you reread that section about the taking one more time?
Yeah. The requirement of providing common land, open for use in common by all lot owners, at least raises the question of whether it might constitute, under some circumstances, a taking of property that requires just compensation or, in some particular circumstance, goes beyond the statutory authority. All right. But I am not advising that the Select Board reject the proposed change from "may" to[401.31][401.31]"shall" in Section 7.664. It's the very last paragraph of the proposed amendment. He says, "I'm not suggesting that we reject that, but I do want to be sure to advise that this requirement, under some circumstances, might provide complicated or raise legal issues. I've not attempted to research these in any depth, but thought I should start by flagging the potential issue." So that was his two legal comments. And then he says, basically says, "A planning consultant would be more qualified than I am to provide feedback on the mechanics of this provision." So--
All right.
-- copies of that.
I guess, Carla, were you -- do you have a comment on that, as you raised the question, or?
Well, I'm -- no, I just wasn't quite sure. I understand the concern about the potential regulatory taking. I think it's pretty, as he kind of notes, pretty far out there that it's not likely because any time you regulate property, you can argue that there's been a taking by the federal government or the local government. So I'm not too concerned about that. I get -- and the only -- I would have a question, Chris, though. You explained what we wanted to do to make it a little bit easier for developers. How could you, in 25 words or less, tell me, even though I know I read this stuff, but 25 words or less, what are we doing that is making it easier now? We're just -- we're not -- we're not -- from what I saw, we're not describing some prohibitions or just kind of cutting them off or closing them?
Well, okay. It's a very complicated little piece, and it's very hard to look at every possible permutation that could come out of this. And really, the gist of it is in the table on the second page here. And what it is, is that we're striking the requirements for individual lots--
Right.
-- with the idea that you might not even have individual lots. In other words, you can see this in other places in Vermont, that where the land is owned in common and that there are 12 households on it, that the individual lots are not designated. You own a share of common land, and in addition to that, you own a share of open space common land. And examples of this in Bennington County, in the center of Arlington Village, is a project that's organized somewhat along these lines, not exactly, which is called Arlington Village Center, which has, you know, and then you have to take it into the idea of common septic, for instance, or common water supply, which this project has. It has, I believe it has public water, but common septic in this case. So that, you know, this is a strategy that is employed around the state. You see examples of it in other counties. I'm not aware of many examples in Banega County, but it's strongly endorsed by our town plan, which devotes three pages to discussion and a diagram of this. So if this is in a direction that the Select Board wants to go, then we should also change the town plan.
Right. Which is coming up--
Which we're working on this right now, yes.
Would that be more toward residential or commercial or industrial?
Well, any use that is allowed in that zoning district. So in the front of this, it says-- it talks about permitted uses for open space subdivisions, one- and two-family dwellings, multifamily, houses of worship, parish houses, community centers, parks, playgrounds, and any other uses permitted in that district.
It is part of the rural residential or village residential districts, but it doesn't preclude some other commercial, as Chris noted, there's some other commercial things that could potentially be there. There are things that we think of as commercial, like, you know--
Well, you could envision like a religious community, for instance, that had a church and a parish house and--
Several residences.
And a bunch of residences, right.
That example you gave in Arlington, is that south of Pond Store on the right?
It's right -- it's right across from Pond Store.
It's across, but slightly sheltered.
Yes.
Up on the hill.
Yes.
Is that low-income housing?
Well, the term, I'm on that board, the term is affordable housing.
Yeah, but is that tax-free? They pay property taxes on that?
Absolutely. Same rate that you pay.
With this same -- with this idea in mind, and you, like you mentioned, like some common ownership of property, kind of goes back to the point that, as I understood Attorney Wilmington's comment, if you're going to a place like this and purchase this, you kind of know what you're getting into when you go into it conceivably, you know, if you're purchasing one of the homes in the subdivision. I guess I have a hard time unless they're talking about the original owner being told that he can't develop it in a certain way, that being the taking of property. But I can't imagine that at the point of, after the property's developed and then someone comes in and acquires a parcel or a piece of it to begin using, I don't see the -- I guess the -- I'm feeling the stretch. It's really a stretch on that.
The taking is any time a governmental entity comes in and restricts your use of the property for whatever it is. And, I mean, there's always some restriction, like zoning, et cetera, but to the point where you are denying the fair use of that property for what that person would reasonably use it for and just say, "You can't use it for anything other than a wildlife preserve or a common area." So he says, "You mean, I can't build my tennis court on it?" Or, "I can't build my guesthouse for my grandchildren." The answer is no. Well, the question is, is that overregulation?
Well, there's a give and take here.
Yeah.
You're getting a density bonus of 20%, and in exchange, you're going to maintain open land.
Yeah. Right. And I think, again, and as he notes, it's probably a stretch. I guess he's saying that it's a possibility more than a probability, as I understood.
Yeah. I mean, it might be a colorable argument, but not likely to be successful.
Bill?
Is there any difference in this, beach rights or lake rights?
Beach rights or what rights?
Repararian rights.
Lake rights.
Well, when you're dealing -- water's a whole lot different type of situation than regular property, when you're dealing with the rights to access to water or use of water.
How about the beach?
Say again?
How about the beach?
Well, typically, it's subject to high tide, high tide water, kind of beach, or just a lake?
Beach rights, where you have a common property--
Yeah.
-- and you can go there and have a clubhouse on.
On a lake, you're talking about?
Probably on the lake.
Yeah.
Put a pond.
Yeah, I'm just thinking, not tidal water type stuff. You're just talking about inland waters. It would probably be, yeah, so much similar.
Yeah.
Well, water can be taken out and used by somebody, and there's rights that go with that as opposed to property. Property, you know, for instance, in this case, maybe the guy wanted to build a well on it, if you want to get something close to it, and if he said, "No, this has got to be a common area," or, "I need it for my septic field so I can build a second house" or something, that would get into the issue of whether or not you've got a potential taking, you know? If you have a piece of property that's big enough for a house, okay, and a septic field, and then a town comes in and says, "But you've got to set aside 10% of your property to a common area," and then that owner has no area where he can put a septic field, so he can't build a house. That hypothetically could be a taking, potentially.
I think this is the same situation.
I don't think it is either. I'm just saying, that's why I say I believe it's a stretch. I'm just trying to explain what I -- the concept a little bit.
Frankly, this is something that happens a priori. The house isn't built yet, and people come into this knowing what they can do and can't do.
True.
Yeah. That's kind of was my thought, too.
But it still goes -- it goes back to whoever owns the property, that's selling it to the owner. And he may say, or she may say, "You now have placed this burden on me. The value of the property before was X, and now that you've put this on, the value of the property is X minus Y. So I've had something denied me." That's the concept. I'm not arguing it applies here. I'm just saying that's kind of the concept.
Yeah, that could be the argument that could be made, but it might be a--
The purchaser might not have an issue, but the owner would have an issue.
If the owner is the person doing the development, presumably.
Well, I, you know, again, a developer, if you have 50 acres and you say, "Well, 10% of this property now must be common area," you've now denied that developer 10% of development.
No, you're basically asking to make a trade-off--
Right.
-- between a density bonus, except stealing land, or not. And he has the choice of doing not, and that's--
He doesn't have to do it.
Yeah. And so by some of the, as I'm understanding these changes, is they're trying to, with the changes made, they're actually making it less onerous or maybe more beneficial, if you will, for developers to try to do this because seeing we've had exactly zero of these in the town in the past, the idea is if we're trying to open this up a little bit, maybe someone will take us up on it.
Again, I'm not saying there is that issue. That's what I'm saying, that's why this is a kind of a remote issue.
Yeah.
I'm not suggesting it's there.
It is a little academic.
It's, yeah, it's academic. It's, if you will, what lawyers do, it's issue spotting. What, is there an issue here? Well, maybe there's an issue about this.
Well, you know, I mean, I think the thing about mobile homes would be good to get a real legal opinion on that.
Yeah.
Because, you know, I'm not enough of a lawyer to say unequivocally that this is okay and that it doesn't fly in the face of, you know, the laws that prohibit discrimination against mobile homes, which Vermont guards very closely. And, you know, it just says that you can't use this type of development to create mobile home parks. And we've had many, many discussions as the Planning Commission level about what the role of mobile homes is. And in Shasbury, we've chosen to treat them just like any other structure, which is you have to conform to zoning, period. And so that doesn't discriminate against anybody.
But why would you then take that category of structure out? Or dwelling? That particular class or structure? Do you remember it all? I just, I'm trying to remember.
Well, this goes back to discussions about designating areas of town for mobile home parks. And we were loath to do that. Now, again, this is a little academic in that you're not seeing new mobile home parks spring up anywhere that I'm aware of. And I think that there are underlying economic reasons for that and maybe zoning permitting reasons as well, although not in our zoning, I would say. So, but does this pass muster?
Don't know.
I don't know the answer.
And I guess the point that could be argued, and I think it's, again, it's the point that's in front of us. What this proposed change of bylaw says, it doesn't say we can't have mobile home parks in the community. It just says that they are not subject to this particular provision.
Right.
So that is, I guess, and that's the point of potential contention, is that, well, why can't we do them here? So--
And, you know, what's interesting is that if you look at, mobile home parks tend to be cluster developments, and there's usually the most demand for recreational resource, you know, some sort of place where everybody could, the kids can all run around or have a little bike path here and there or-- the only way I've seen this type of plan come into play was, well, I've seen lots of major housing developments that are cluster developments, but there was another sort of atypical development that became a condo association, and I think that's also very similar, right?
Yeah.
To this.
Well, it's common land ownership.
Yeah. It's all common land ownership and the structures, but it was not built as such. But you were able to, people agreed to go back retroactively.
Yeah. Condo associations, you know, in various formats are very common throughout the whole country. So, Bill?
I'd like to point out two potential problems. One, not going to be easily fixed, but they should be fixed.
Okay.
Have a little handout for people to read. Point out the problem. The problem is, you have to oppose subdivision regulation, lose all lots and internal setbacks. And it requires still the parcel as a whole, but not for the individual lots within the parcel. And secondly, because of that, there is a possibility that the parcel could be divided according to the rules of open space subdivision, leaving one lot with the bulk of the land. There aren't any further, aren't any restrictions on further development of land in the open space system. And therefore, once subdivided, that large lot could be further subdivided. There's no rule that says it couldn't be. Now, if you go through the mathematics of it, you'll find, I've got an example on the second page, it shows that you end up, something in order to increase the asset. And a simple way to fix that, and that is to simply say that, if subdivided according to this open space regulation, it cannot be further subdivided.
Well, would you have a copy of that for me?
You want this one?
There was an extra.
Here, take--
Oh, okay, here.
You can have that one. That's, it makes sense to me. I--
I'm just concerned that someone might spot this and take advantage of it. And if you own a mobile home park, you might get it under those conditions.
Yeah. No, that is a good point, though. Ken?
The second point is that there is a conflict between the proposed bylaw and subdivision regulation. The subdivision regulation states, and let's see, the last section. The mutation of the allowance could be increased by a maximum 15%.
You now have 20, right?
What section was that, Bill?
That's 6.06 of the subdivision.
Yeah, so you'd either, you would need to, you could leave that in there other than, add a sense, other than, under the--
Yes, you have to fix the main section. The two are consistent.
Yeah.
You need to specify something close to the bylaw.
Right.
What I would suggest here is that we delete this section from the zoning bylaws and replace the section in the subdivision regulations, which is where, in my mind, it properly belongs because it deals with subdivision.
Right.
So that we just wholesale, you know, we have a situation now where we have open space subdivision defined in two different regulations that deal with land use.
Okay.
This is a recipe for a real problem.
Yeah.
So I would say, we just say in the zoning bylaws, C subdivision, you know, open space subdivision, C subdivision regulations, and then just import this into that. Now, I don't think that represents a substantive change, which is the hurdle of public hearing to say that, you know, if you make substantive change, you have to start the process over again. I'm hoping it doesn't.
Okay. Ken, you have a question?
I guess I got two questions. One would be, what has been the feedback you've had so far?
From the community you're talking about?
Yeah.
In their hear, in your hearings?
People had trouble understanding the bylaw, so--
That would make two of us.
Right. Well, I started off by saying it's complicated and it, so people imagined that it would generate a lot of things that it wouldn't. That it would open the door for, oh, I don't know, big low-income subdivisions or something like that.
Ingo.
Okay. And can you tell me how that will come to pass?
Well, I would do everything to make sure that didn't happen because--
Why would it come to pass? What is the incentive in this bylaw?
What's the incentive in any bylaw for that? Because the low-income housing, as I understand it, is tax-free. You get no tax, property taxes, or nothing, right?
Yeah. And you base that on what information?
Well, as far as I know, there's no income taxes from Willowbrook or Applegate. And why would Shasbury want such a thing?
Well, I believe that's inaccurate, and I can't absolutely--
Well, I don't know. I'm just, I'm just saying.
You don't know? Well, now it comes out that you don't know. That's a different story.
I think, well, I think the town should really know before and should be looked into. And I think that any regulation, regardless of what it is, should be very clear so that anyone in town doesn't need a lawyer to interpret that.
Why couldn't you build Willowbrook in Shasbury under present zoning?
Why would you want to?
No, no.
If you--
If you wanted to, why couldn't you?
I don't know if you could or couldn't.
Seems to me you could.
Well, I would make sure that if there was no property taxes from it, it wouldn't be here.
Okay.
If I could.
Fair enough. But I don't see anything in zoning that prohibits it.
And there's nothing in here that gives it any greater incentive?
No. Not that I see.
I can't see it.
No.
And the other part, like Bill said there, once you have got a permitted area with open space, that's going to be permitted for septic system and everything else. If you tried to put anything else in there, you're going to have to redo your septic, and they're not going to let you do that, I don't believe.
It's not within the purview of a local zoning board to be able to regulate septic. That's regulated by the state. You work with septic, you know that.
Right. I understand. That's what I'm saying. That once you've got a permitted site, it's, you don't just rush right out there and go do it again.
Right. But what you're suggesting is that it's a common septic, and there's nothing in this that suggests that that has to be organized that way.
Any developments, I've done several myself in Arlington and Sunderland, or Sunderland and Manchester, rather, and they all, most of them have common septic. You'll have three or four, even five houses on one septic system.
Right. Yeah, I've seen, I've seen that quite a bit, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, you know-- Well, I mean, you know, you can build your septic any size that...
Right, right.
You know, you can build, build in spare capacity.
Oh, yeah, exactly.
So, but I mean, this, this is silent on the question of how to organize septic.
Right.
You could have one system per household, you could have common water supply and individual septic.
Right.
We're not suggesting how that has to be organized.
The idea, again, I guess, summing up, the idea behind these, the open space subdivision idea is to conceivably reduce what we all call urban sprawl, where, you know, instead of having the farmland that we all have known and loved through our lives, which is already becoming less, what it does is, it still maintains, instead of having one, two, three-acre lots of one house apiece with no, you know, continuing, you know, larger pieces of undeveloped, if you will, property, this, this encourages people to put the houses a little closer together and leave room for a ball field or something like that, I guess, you know, using really big picture, bucolic terms.
Here, here in your town plan is a diagram of that exact situation.
I remember that.
Having been on the planning commission.
Once upon a time.
Maybe even worked on this bylaw.
I think so. This one has been in the works for a little bit, so. Ken, any other thoughts or questions?
It's mainly just, you know, I, I guess I'm probably like a lot of people, frustrated with, it seems like some guy sitting over here, little Tim God sitting up in the corner, and he's got all these rules and regulations that you can't understand. I mean, I kind of like things right out, black and white, cut and dried, so you don't need 14 lawyers to go figure it out for you. I mean, I've dealt with quite a lot of stuff in my years of doing, putting in septic systems and stuff, of bureaucracy, that to me is absolutely stupid, where, you know, you've got a beautiful view over here, and you can't put the house over here because the septic system needs it. So it's, you know, I mean, that's extreme, I'll grant you. But it's, when you have to deal with it from the state, it, it gets frustrating. And I just, I would like to see everything as cut and dried and as plain, matter of fact, black and white as possible.
Carl, do you have any?
I guess I'm, I'm not quite sure, Kenny, what, what part of this you're reading is being Greek. It seems relatively straightforward to me. I, I don't see it as doing that much different than what was before, or what, as Chris said, is what people can do anyway, so I don't see too many 50 cent words in it either, so I, I don't have a problem. I think it's, it was well thought out, Chris's explanation, I think, is pretty reasonable. And I happen to like Bill's suggestion as a failsafe, which I think makes perfectly good sense. So I, I think it's well done. Thank you.
Karen?
I would agree. Again, I don't think it, it does give an incentive to the developer. It does not tell them that they have to do it. And I'm comforted, frankly, by our planning commission members spending the time that they've spent on this and evidenced by Bill, being able to, I mean, sometimes, yes, you want things to be black and white, and yet, you know, there sometimes can be some gray in there that gets you in trouble. And, you know, I think one example is Bill reviewing this pretty carefully and seeing that indeed, there might be a way that somebody could, you know, get a little slippery around it. And so I think that that suggestion is spot on. But I'm, I'm not terribly concerned. I do think, I'm not at all concerned, not, I think the idea of putting it in with the subdivision regulations is good. And in fact, will help to take away some confusion that people may have in looking at the two different pieces, you know, together. So again, I, you know, I echo the thanks to the planning commission for the work they've, they've done on this. It's been, you know, some time in the making, I think, to be sure that you've covered, covered the bases to protect the town.
Margie?
Well, my suspicion is that we would have to rewarn this for, because this says that what we're doing is amending the zoning bylaw. So, I hate to say it, so I think we would, and now, now...
Because of Bill's suggestion, Margie?
No, just...
No, because now we're doing a strike-all to the zoning bylaw, and what we're doing is amending the subdivision regulations instead. So, but I don't think that that, I think we could still warn that. I guess the question is, does this, this is substantial enough to have to go back to the planning commission? That's what I'm wondering, to be correct. Let me find that.
Well, okay, the issues that I see outstanding are the question of mobile homes.
Right.
Which we should get a clear legal opinion on. Then what Margie just said about subdivision regulations versus zoning bylaws, and then what the issue that Bill brought up about being able to tap the density bonus more than once. So, I mean, that could just be a one-sentence statement that, you know, you can't further, once your open space subdivision plan has been accepted, you can't further subdivide.
Mm-hmm.
Oh, and one other thing, there should be a definition of multifamily housing.
Oh, yeah.
Because this is a term that's used here, but it, it doesn't appear in our definitions.
Well, anywhere else in the bylaw?
It doesn't appear.
But if we're going to do a strike-all to the zoning bylaw, and this is now going to go to subdivision regs, do you have a definition there of multi? Oh, we'll check.
I don't think so.
Okay.
In the address of, in the quest to Bill's comments, and not saying we won't or shouldn't put in the lines accordingly, but it does say in there that, to clarify the open space area that the plan showing the overall property has building envelopes where all the structures shall be placed, primary structure, auxiliary structures, and such. If that's the case, and I have a 10-acre lot, and I have capability of five lots, but I know this, the hypothetical is keeping with the open space, I can add another lot, which is six, at least I can put six building envelopes. Once I've done that, and I'm trying the overall lot, I can't, in my mind, subdivide it again and try again and put another three or four on top of that. But, you know, like I said, if we need to put in a line, we'll put in a line.
Yeah, but if you had 20 acres in my work...
Yeah, or 100 acres. Well, it doesn't matter. If I have 100 acres and I can put in two-acre lots, I can put in 50 houses. Here's the 50 building envelopes up in the upper left and right-hand corners, leaving the front, two-thirds full.
David, Bill's point is about doubling the bonus, is a second round of subdivision, which could happen, and it could happen under the present bylaw that we have now.
Right. Right, that's true. I mean, it could, it's there, the wording, the, that crack, that door cracked, is there today.
It's a big one.
Yeah, so.
Again, I'm not, this, I just...
Yeah.
What you're saying is true, that it frankly is not likely to happen, but it could happen.
Yes.
And that's the problem.
It very definitely could happen. I have no further comments on it, as far as, you know, from my perspective, we've covered the gamut of anything I had. Jay?
Just a quick reminder, because I think on 7.6.1.3, the national last line was 25% of local, 25% or less, that's off the steep, am I wrong? Subdivision regulations, the land that should be able to use, but it's really...
25%, that's very steep, yes.
Yeah.
I think that that runs through the bylaw, though, in that it talks about you're not allowed to use that land to compute minimum lot area either. So that carries through in a bunch of other provisions.
Yeah, but we're talking about land, usable land that's going to be used for recreation in this particular case. And if it's going to be too steep to be used for recreation, then it should be less.
Well, the land that would be set aside also has to be usable land. It can't be too steep, it can't be too wet, it can't be any of those...
Right, you can't, you can't take the swamp and make that common land.
Oh, okay, so...
Actually, I think that that actually, that wording, I think it solves, I think, what you're concerned about, Jay, am I, is that correct?
In other words, it doesn't, doesn't say it here. Well, anything under 25% can be used for usable land. That's the way I read it.
Yeah, that...
But it's also got to lie outside of wetland, wetland buffer, beyond the limits of a lake, pond, or stream.
Well, it's the same thing as wetland, but you can't use, he can't use wetland because it's wet.
Right.
He can't use 25% land because it's too steep.
Well, I think the object is...
I see what you're saying.
Anything that can be used for development, is that the same rules apply to that as to the open space.
Right.
And if it's too steep for development, then it's not legitimate for open space either.
Right, if you look under 7.6.6.1, it talks about the common land, and it uses the term usable, which is italicized, meaning that it's a defined term. So if you go to the definitions, you'll see that, that says it's not wetlands, it's not steep slopes, it's not lake buffer, and so on, so on.
And that's in the...
Definition.
Definition section of the zoning bylaws.
Slightly different between the present and the...
Okay, now on page, well, I guess it'll be the second page, 7.6.3.1. One, two, three, four, five. It goes down, and it says that forest and recreation zoning district cannot be used as, as open space.
Well, and also, forest and recreation zones can't be, can't have common...
Can, can...
Forest and recreation zones can't have open space. And those forests, they do not include in this, of these land areas. It's not that you can't have that, and it's not used, but it's not going to be calculated in the open space. You can't do it.
Right.
Not going to be calculated as open space.
So, Jay, if you go back to the beginning, second, second provision, it says that this applies to rural residential and village residential districts. So if you own land that split a zoning boundary, and some of it was in forest and rec, it's just saying you can't, you can't count that, because this isn't allowed use in forest or rec.
It's a good one. It's a rural residential, you know, the...
Thank you for the questions, and also, David, for providing that. The only, the only concern that we had is that that conversation can't be heard on the camera, so, which was, it was good conversation, but if we have any further, make sure that we get it so everybody can hear it. Is there any other questions from the, from the public?
I apologize for coming in late on your hearing this morning, but I addressed this with Chris before, and I'd just like to bring it up again. I realized a lot of work was gone in the planning, you're trying to expand the livable, buildable area around the center of the town. This was brought up before, it wasn't thought out on lot sizes and stuff. You've done a lot of work making it practical as far as what can be done in, with the lack of village water, limited amount of public water, so we need to... I guess my problem is, when this was set up before, when it was talked about before, it bothered my property. It has been changed.
This is something different, Oliver.
Are we talking about the zoning, the zoning change, the whole thing that was, we talked about?
No, that's coming, but it's not tonight.
This is open, this is just open space subdivision. This is just, has to do with open space subdivision only.
Okay, I'm sorry, I misunderstood that, your warning and...
Okay.
...clear on that, because we had talked about some public here.
This has...
When I brought it up, I just want to say, I don't like having my land included in the village designation.
Okay, so when we get to that further, when we get to that hearing, we will, we'll...
That was values for jumping these up.
No problem, not a problem. I'm glad that you actually brought it up, so we will make sure that we're, we'll address that when we discuss that one.
Thank you.
Is there any other questions from the public regarding the open space subdivisions before we close the hearing for this evening? Okay, seeing none.
Do you want to close it or continue it?
I think we're going to need, well, this, this poses the question, it comes back to what you just indicated. Given the fact, I don't believe that we've made substantive changes to the, to the bylaw itself, in, in the wording that we're doing, but we're actually, I do think we may have to rewarn it, given that we're changing where we're going to conceivably put it. I concur with you on that, that we need to probably rewarn it so that we can do that. I think, I, I believe, and I'm going to ask the rest of the board, if the changes that we've discussed this evening are, if you feel that those are substantial enough that we have to return it to the planning commission, start the whole process over again, and then bring it back to us, or if these are amendments that are more of a clarifying or unsubstantial, if you will, change in the, in the bylaws as they were set up.
Well, I guess I would have one question about, you know, we have a reference, something we're referencing back to the town attorney on mobile homes, so that, that would impact this perhaps?
Mm-hmm.
And so, you know, perhaps there could be a substantial change that comes out of that, I don't know.
So in that case, maybe, then the continuance might be the...
Until April 15.
And perhaps we could, at the same time, get some kind of a reading from him as to the proper procedure if, if we are going to rewarn it as a change to the subdivision regulations, and eliminate it from the zoning bylaws.
Okay. Carl?
I concur, I think that continuance would be the right thing to do, based on, on the fact that we may have a substantive change, we don't know.
Okay, Ken?
Yeah, I would go along with that, but I, like I said before, I just want, everything just as black and white, anybody can understand it without having a law degree. That's my main point.
Bill has it.
Bill?
I'd like to point out that the structure of the subdivision regulations is very different in certain ways than the zoning bylaws. And so melding the two, not just a matter of moving the section over, it's going to take a little bit of work.
Thank you for the input. Based on that, I think then the, probably the appropriate action will be to continue the hearing, following, following that information, the rest of the information gathering. I guess the next step is the legal opinion from the town attorney. So as a matter of...
That's good.
So at this point, then, we'll continue... So at this point, then, we'll continue it. I don't believe we have to have a motion to do that. I believe that we just.
Continue till April fifteenth?
Continue till April fifteenth, as a matter of procedure.
With, and we'll have feedback.
We hopefully have the legal opinion.
Okay. Thank you, everyone, for your impact.
Would you like us to reformat the thing to fit the subdivision regulations?
Well, that's what I was just going to ask. Now we have a choice, it sounds like. Go ahead and, I don't know, what's the wish of the planning commission?
Well, we just pointed out that, that it's a kind of goofy arrangement here where.
Right, right.
You know, a couple of words different from one to the other, you could have a completely contradictory outcome, or you could have a conflict.
Chris, depending on what we might get back from the town attorney, might, might that create double the work, though, depending on what his opinion might be? If, if you do it now, and then we get something back, and you have to go back and make some changes again, would it be better just to wait and do it all at once?
Okay. Let me sit down with the subdivision regulations and really get a handle on what's necessary.
Okay.
And we'll take that up, too, maybe on the fifteenth.
All right. So, continue to April.
Fifteenth. And we'll focus at that point strictly on those two questions, I guess.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you very much to the planning commission.
Yeah, thanks again.
Okay, just so that you have a good sense that the planning commission is working away on other things. This was approved back in 2010, I think it says at the header, August 24th. No, but we're about to dump another package on you.
That's right.
Yes.
Also, what Oliver was talking about, about expansion of the village residential district and home occupations. So.
Yes, those are coming.
Watch your inbox.
Soon. They need to go away so you can work on the town plan.
Be stay unwarned.
Yeah, thank you. All right. We have, the next item up on the agenda this evening is that we need to convene the water board for two topics that need to be addressed on a very, they need, they need to happen immediately and not wait. So I would like, is it, again, I'm going to ask in this, I'm not sure if we need to recess the select board meeting and then convene the water board meeting?
Yep.
All right. So I would ask for a motion from the board to recess the select board meeting so we can then take up a water board meeting.
So moved.
Do I have a second? Is there any discussion regarding that? There being none, all is in favor of recessing the select board meeting, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any extensions? All right, then I'm going to turn, now we have the, turn the, this over to the water board chair.
Okay. Well, we'll go down our, do our housekeeping. We'll open the water board meeting. Does anyone have any announcements?
No.
No.
Okay. Any conflict of interest, anything on the agenda?
No.
Any public comments? You may have some afterwards, but, so, we are together, actually, we're, we're primarily going to speak about item number four, which has to do with the, the water leak at the school, the elementary school. Fifth item, which is delinquencies, Joe has asked if we could take that up, hopefully for, just prior to our April 15th meeting.
Okay.
So we'll do another replay of public hearing and water, hopefully water early, because Joe is taking time off from work to be here.
Okay.
So, Joe, do you want me to give a quick background? So this, what happened was that Joe, who works very closely with the North Bennington Water Department, got a call from them on February 28th, saying that there was a real spike in the water that was being drawn. They suspected a fairly major leak. And so, Joe and Ian Taylor, our assistant superintendent, worked with the North Bennington Water Board to try to locate the source of that leak. Fairly quickly, there was a, a leak that was identified on the North Bennington end. And they informed Joe, but it appeared that even once that leak was taken care of, there was still a substantial loss of water. So, Joe, again, they all worked together to try to identify it. They broke the district up into quadrants and took one quadrant at a time. They called in Northeast Water Works Association. Once the leak was identified as being in the area of the school, Joe notified the school maintenance director and let him know that there was a problem. And we felt that it was located somewhere in the line between the, where the line comes off of the road, basically the curb line into the school. Joe had Northeast Water Works Association come down with their equipment to actually pinpoint where the leak was. And they determined on Friday, March 8th, where it actually was. The work was held over because the school, I guess, was having a fundraiser. I think that was their big spaghetti supper for the sixth graders. So the long and the short of it is that the, the leak eventually was repaired, but that there was a loss of water at the rate of 40 gallons a minute for a period of 14 days. So we were looking at a total loss of over, over 800,000 gallons. And at the 7.50 a gallon charge for users, that brings us to a little over $6,000 in a bill to the school. So, the school certainly has been informed. I had talked with both Larry and, or maybe, did I talk with you? I know I talked with Franny.
Fran.
I know you've talked to Larry. And let them know, you know, to be prepared for this. But we wanted to bring it to the board. And I appreciate having Larry and, and Fran here. You know, it's really unfortunate. The bottom line is that, you know, we have to pay for the water. Our regulations to all of the users state very clearly that there, if there are issues in the maintenance of the line from the curb to the, you know, the home or the business, that is the responsibility of the user. So, Joe, I will let you jump in, or questions, or.
The board has any questions on it?
Yep. Did I cover it pretty much?
You covered everything right on that, yep. This is the, well, I'm in 39 years as a water superintendent. This is one, two, three, three leaks they had so far. Line is old and shouldn't be replaced. I mentioned it to the school, to Larry there, that the board, the school should replace this line. It's a two-inch galvanized line, or two-inch cast iron line, and it's lead joints.
Lead joints?
Lead joints, yes. It's laid in clay. Some of it's on ledge, so. But anyway, as far as the, I'm gathering it up with my engineer, with the work for what has to be done to the school. And the one thing I do have here is the thing from our engineer, which is Otter Creek. I don't have enough sheets here, but you can pan it. I think you got one, Karen.
I got one, yep.
I, I've heard the story now. I'll show my ignorance. What are we being asked to do?
Well, we're basically being asked to authorize the sending of an invoice to the school for the costs of the water that was lost.
And if we don't?
We absorb it, users.
So we're being asked whether or not the town should absorb the cost?
That's the ultimate, yeah.
Okay. I'd just like to.
Yeah.
Get it out on the table.
Yes.
Okay. And let me ask another question.
Go.
What, I understand the facts, it's pretty, pretty basic.
Yep.
When has the town, in the past, in memory, absorbed substantial costs for the school? It didn't have to be for water, it could have been for anything. Or is this a precedent?
I'm going to say back when the first break was on it, back in when, many days ago, it was only, water was real cheap. The town absorbed it. That's when the Fidel Farm truck fell through backing up. There was a leak there for years, and we couldn't find it.
This was at the school?
At the school. So it was the main, the main big break, and the town absorbed it.
And you said that, how much?
But now, since the price of water's gone up quite a bit.
How much was the, how much was that ballpark number?
It was something like some 50 cents a gallon per thousand.
I, I don't know. Were we talking, did the town absorb $1,000, $500, $3,000?
No, I was going to say about close to 4,000, or, because it was leaking for quite a while, and we never knew it. Back then, when water was cheap, we didn't really get too excited over it.
Well, and, you know, the bottom line is, it's, it's not the town that's absorbing it, it's the users.
No, the users.
It's the, it's the other water users. We have 302 water users, so they're the ones that are absorbing it.
Oh, I see, because we'll just pass the cost on for the next.
Right, right. And when you look at our operational budget, you know, we're working on a budget of about $25,000. That's not including, you know, the payments, the debt service to North Bennington, and, but in terms of our actual operational budget.
This is roughly 25%.
Yeah, yeah. It's a significant.
Almost 25%.
It's a significant hit.
I don't want to jump the gun, but are we going to hear from the school, Larry, I know Larry's sitting right there, but.
I'm happy after the board, unless the, any other board members have.
Let me finish, let me finish my topic. Are we going to hear from the school why this would have a disastrous financial impact on the school, or how it would otherwise impact the town? In any case, I mean, I guess my point being, you know, if, if we don't absorb it, and then pass it on to the town, and the school has to pay for it, well, next year, school taxes will go up, and the town will pay for it that way. So, I mean, is it pay me now or pay me later? Is that, that's why I'd, I'd kind of like to hear from the school before.
We've got two school board members.
If we've exhausted the facts.
I have, I have no further questions for Joe.
You know, I guess the only comment I would have prior to the school board answering that question is if it's absorbed by the school, the whole town pays. If it's not absorbed by the school, the 300 users pay the $6,000. So my preference, frankly, would be, you know, and I'm a taxpayer, and I'm not a water user, but I don't think it's fair for, for other users to absorb, you know, because frankly.
See, now you're jumping the gun before.
Well, that's true, that's true. But I have, you know, it's my prerogative as board chairman.
Look at that.
You know, I, we, we have had leaks in the system. We have had residents on the system who have had leaks that have been required to pay. So, you know, to say to the school.
Latest, a couple of years ago, we had a major one.
Right. And I think we need to look at the school not as the town, but as a user, as a water user, because they are. You know, if we had a leak here to Cole Hall, we would have to pay the water system, basically. And so, then the whole town absorbs it. But in this particular case, you know, I, I just, I don't, I personally don't think that it's fair to the water users.
Can I ask another question? About a factual question. Joe, is there, was there any reason to believe that anyone from the school knew or should have known that this leak was going on?
There was no effect to their pressure at all.
And there was no pool of water sitting out in the middle of a.
Stayed underground.
Football field or something?
Nope. It was right in the blacktop.
So other than, other than the provider advising us of the successive amount, nobody reasonably would have been aware of it? And the break that occurred was, was that, what was the basis for the break on the school property? Was it age? Was it poor maintenance? Any idea?
I'm going to say it was two things, was the age and the traffic on it. Because when you go in, the right-hand side is the fire, left-hand side of the fire, going down in the back of the school, there's a little dip right there where the fence is, that's where the break was, right in there.
It's under the driveway.
There's a blacktop in the driveway, yeah.
Okay. And how much was the repair?
How much was the repair?
Yeah.
I don't know what it cost them for the contractor, but North Bennington and I put our time in it, and we gave them the part for it, which cost $125.
Yeah, but somebody dug it up, and somebody.
Yeah, I don't know what their, their.
The school took care of that.
The school took care of that.
Had to get their own contractor. We don't hire.
And based on what was found, when, were you there when they dug it up?
Oh, yeah.
Based on what was found, was there reason to believe that this type of break could occur again because of the age or maintenance of the pipe? Not, not in that location, but somewhere else?
Oh, yeah, it could have happened somewhere else, yeah. Could have been down lower or higher up by the fire.
No, my point is, is the condition of the pipe such that one might expect another break at some point?
Mm-hmm. Yes. And the school has been advised of that, right? Yeah, yeah. You know, I might say, Joe is, you know, won't say this himself, but, and they would do this, it doesn't matter if it was the school or if it was a user, you know, another user. But they worked, like, all night for two weekends. You know, you need to, you need to.
When we do this at night, most of the time, you can't do, do this during the day because there's so much water being used. You're looking for a drop in the readings up at the filtration plant. At night, the lower pressure, everything goes down. We go down to something like 25 gallons per minute in an hour. So when we shut down the lines, we can see that drop down to 10, 15, or wherever it belongs at. It was staying at 40 gallons a minute at night. So when we started dropping our valves and shutting them down, we could see it going down a little bit, but it wouldn't go down quite enough until we located it where it was. At 11 o'clock at night, I had, just before the contractors got there, I shut that unit down. Ian and I both shut it down at 11 o'clock at night. As soon as we did that, we went right to normal. So we knew it was right there.
Okay.
I guess I look at it a little different, you do, Ken. Sure, they're a user and all that, but it's a lot easier for them to find that money in their budget than it is in our budget.
Well, then we agree. You just said it's a lot easier for them to find the money in their budget.
In the school.
Then we agree. That's my.
I understood that you were going to let the town absorb it.
No.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry.
No, no. I said, I don't think the.
I stand corrected.
No, I mean, the town will absorb it through the school budget.
Town will pay for it, sure.
The whole town, you know, will absorb it through the school budget. If, if we absorb it here, it's just you and other people.
I stand corrected, I'm sorry.
Yeah. Larry or Fran, did you want to, you know, make any comments or?
Well, a couple of questions that I had. Seems like it never went through the meter or anything, so I'm wondering how they.
It went through our, went through our master meter.
Your master meter, okay. So that's how you, gallons and that, and that stuff. And the, the total of the repair, which I don't know what it is, I just, the part was $125, so I don't know what the contractor, whoever they.
Yeah, I don't know what the contractor.
Okay.
John had went through the school, he hired him.
Since then, we have talked about doing the, the pipe, because we had, we had some bits for re-blacktopping, where there's no sense of the blacktop. We've got to dig it up and put a pipe in. So that changes things a little bit. So we'll be taking it up at our next meeting, which is next week anyway.
Yeah. What I told the principal and Jay there the other day, we had the, one of the engineers from, that I deal with, Otter Creek, he was down at the Bennington College, he had stopped. And he had presented that sheet there, I just gave it an email. He's looking into different, different types of pipe and everything else for the school, just to, just to give an idea, not to say that you guys have to do this.
Right.
It's up to you, but it's just an idea. And I should have it by Wednesday, put a full thing there. They had asked for, when you guys have your school meeting.
Yeah.
To present this, it's a proposal, that's all it is.
Right.
It's up to you, people do what you want. But the age of that pipe, see, nobody was there at the time except Jay and the contractor, the guy from Northeastern, he came down to look at the pipe, North Bennington, and said, you know, that is in bad shape.
Yeah.
You know, it's, it's in bad shape. At the same time, you're talking about a sprinkler system, you know, possibility, you know, in the future. I mean, I don't know when you're going to do it. But at the same time, I'm working with the engineers, see, coordinated for the same size pipe for your thing there. The sprinkler system, you don't have to do right away. You could put the new pipe in and tap into that later.
Right.
Just dead-end it, and just tap off your domestic water. Down the road, you can have it all set for it.
Right.
You know, there'll be a proposal coming in with three, three different types of pipe, duct iron, plastic, all that.
It was said that the town was going to supply copper pipe, and I said, I don't think so.
No.
Oh, no.
Out there. Why would never.
It's amazing what people think we're going to do. It's amazing what people think we're gonna do.
Have copper in your line.
Today, April 1st.
Yeah, right, right. It's the April fool's joke of the day, right?
You do have copper in your, in your services over there to the new section.
Right.
They didn't put that old pipe back in there.
Right.
On it.
Larry?
I did state that the town water department would put in the valve to make sure that when you're tapped into my system, you're done. It's done right. But then from there, it's all yours, you know.
Right.
Okay. Larry?
The only thing I'd add to it is to commend Joe and North Bennington for the great work that they did. I mean, they were on it. They, they had it done in a reasonable amount of time and they worked for the school system to make sure that there wasn't a minimum amount of, of shutdown or any inconvenience to the school. So we do appreciate that.
Thank you.
You're lucky. Craig, I'm sorry. Was there anything that you wanted to add to it or?
No.
Okay.
None at all.
Okay. So, you know, I guess we probably should have a motion to send an invoice to the school. Joe, the amount that you had given me was six thousand forty-eight dollars.
Right.
Okay.
I move that we submit an invoice to the school in the amount of six thousand forty-eight dollars?
Second. And if they don't pay the bill, just shut them down.
You can't do that. There's too many children in that facility.
Yeah. They got that.
All right. Any, any other comments?
Karen, we, if need be, could Joe make his presentation to the board, to the school board to, if there were questions that came out of.
You get, you have to let me know, cause it affects my, my job.
His work schedule.
I mean, I can take time off. You know, just give me, all right. Oh, yeah, I'll be there.
Thank you.
All right. Unless there are any other comments?
I'd like to just make one comment.
Mm-hmm.
Because if people watching this, there are a lot of people that just heard they may have their taxes impacted by it. I'd like to explain why I wouldn't make a motion that the, that the school pay for it and that their school then will presumably, it'll have it impacted the assessment to everybody. But, I mean, it is, in my mind, a school for all our children. We have a vested interest in it. It is, if you will, another type of maintenance that has to be done, which we would all pay for. And it would seem only fair that the whole town participate in that as opposed to simply the water users merely because it was a water line that broke as opposed to some other utility that could have possibly been a problem that would have been part of that budget. So for that reason, I believe that every member of the town should share and gets the benefit of their children, even if they don't have children of this town being educated.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right. It carries. Joe, you had asked me, and I just wanna confirm that again, that in terms of the delinquencies, we do have several long outstanding delinquencies. And Joe and Margie and I will wanna talk with the board about what process we would recommend we go through in order to get payment on those delinquencies. But it's, we're not quite ready.
I'm asking for an April meeting for April fifteenth.
Mm-hmm.
That'd be your next meeting. That's gonna be, have to at least be a half an hour.
So that, I mean, we're, we're scheduled right now, I think, to meet at six-thirty.
Yep.
We're looking at continuing the public hearing. So if we could have the water board meeting, would that work from six-thirty to seven? Or would your preference be to meet at six? Have the water meeting from six to six-thirty and then start the public hearing at six-thirty on the zoning?
I think my, my preference would be to put it off later because it's information that it's not impacting the whole town. It's only impacting certain people. And if those people, because of delinquency, are gonna be impacted, they can come later as opposed to having everybody sit around while we go through that. So I'd rather have that at the end of our agenda or close to the end as opposed to the beginning.
Does that work with your work schedule?
No problem with me. As long as you give me plenty of time.
Okay. So you're saying at the end of the agenda. So we could be looking at eight or eight-thirty or?
Yeah, somewhere's later than, later than earlier. Because I don't think the whole town needs to hear about how, waste their time on it.
How about if we make it at eight o'clock? That'll be our.
Is that, is that okay with you?
Would be.
Last order of business?
Last order of business.
Okay. All right. Okay.
That'll be on the fifteenth, right?
Yes.
Yep.
Well, Margie will let me know.
Yep. All right. Well, and then that's all that we had. So I'll ask for a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous. And we are now adjourned. Joe, thank you very much.
Thanks, Joe.
Fran and Larry, thanks a lot.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
All right. Can I have a motion to reconvene the select board meeting?
So move.
Second.
Any discussion? There being none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Post. Okay. All right. Now we'll continue with the regular meeting of the Shaftesbury Select Board. So the first item up is announcements. Ken, any announcements to start off the meeting?
I don't have anything.
Carl?
No.
Nope.
Karen? Larry?
I have, yes, I have several. I wanted to find my list. The first is, my first announcement is that at least for those of you that are in the neighborhood of Lower East Road, bridge repair repairs are going to begin on or about April ten and continue the following week of the eighteenth, so that we can get that bridge open. And the second announcement has to do with the fact that our household hazardous waste day is scheduled for an earlier date this year. It's April twenty-seventh and not after, what's our long weekend?
May.
May, uh, no.
No.
It's usually a.
Well, we have green up.
Weekend of October.
We have green up day.
It's not the Saturday after green up day, which was the habitual day. It's gonna be the last weekend of April, April twenty-seventh. And we're limiting hours, nine AM to twelve. And I have another announcement, and that is that it, we are looking at a way to divert the collection of fluorescent light bulbs of any type, including UV light bulbs, to maybe be collected the same day, but in a, we're gonna divert it in, in such a fashion that we would be managing the collection ourselves and then tie into the state recycling program to try to forego the cost of having to collect that through household hazardous waste, which is expensive.
Mm-hmm.
And I just wanted to alert you that we, I just got word today of a second illegal dump of a mass of large fluorescent tubes off Potter Montgomery Road. So this is becoming a tremendous issue. I will try to make the state aware of this. They were very little help last time. It was primarily Jerry Madison that cleaned up the whole site.
Did we call?
Whether or not this is going to be the same electrical outfit, but word must be getting around that Shaftesbury seems to be a nice place to dump CFLs. So I'd like to let the state police know as well.
When, when was that discovered?
I got the note this morning.
And we haven't, we haven't had a chance yet to let the police know.
I haven't had a chance to get up there. So it's, this is a waste stream that is very problematic. The state's doing its best, but it's not, not helping.
It's really upsetting because when you're thinking, you know, in that quantity, I mean, unfortunately, it makes you think of a contractor. It makes you think of somebody that's handling that, that, that's really.
Sounds like New Jersey.
Pretty crazy.
How much, how much was it?
I don't know yet. It was several hundred light bulbs before. And we were able.
Are these the long things?
Yes.
These are.
These, the other.
Utilities.
The other dump was off Bear Run Road, right on a snowmobile trail. And by sheer luck, we were able to collect those. Not we, Jerry Madison was able to box those without breakage. And so.
It's really unfortunate.
It's such a tragedy.
It's really unfortunate that people take, you know, instead of being responsible, they, you know, dump it on other people and basically, quite frankly, pocket the, the cost, put it in their own pocket. It's very selfish. It's, it's really unfortunate that people choose to do business in that fashion. I would ask that if we can have state police or the, and/or the sheriff's department look at the site, see if there's any way that they can determine if there's any evidence to figure out who might have done it. I would like to, you know, probably not, but if there is, I would like to, if we're able to determine it, I'd really like to pursue this to the fullest extent the law will allow.
Well, you know.
This is ridiculous.
It would be interesting if they could determine whether there were any big companies that were doing, you know.
Well, that's what we did. We checked.
Changeovers.
Oh, believe me.
Yeah.
Checked below the radar. You know, you just, you start talking around, you find out who's been working where. You call efficiency Vermont and see if there was any organized project in this area.
But we didn't have, find any.
On the last, the last.
On the last.
Okay.
Excuse me. Does it, does it cost these people something to dispose of them correctly?
No, they could not, it hasn't been costing them. They could bring it to hazardous waste if they're a Shaftesbury resident.
No, no. It's a little more complicated than that. The, they've been banned from the landfills. The commercial, high-volume users or recyclers are encouraged to go back to the manufacturers. They're supposed to be taking them back. We are allowed to, through the state program, collect from household. And I believe the threshold is five or fewer bulbs, but I have to go double-check that. If a small quantity generator, an electrician or an institution like the school or anybody wants to get rid of these at a household hazardous waste collection day, they still can through an arrangement directly with Clean Harbors. So we're gonna be making that as part of our publicity, just to make sure that that is known. Otherwise, we won't, I won't allow them. But then you feel like you're turning away somebody with a hundred tubes in the back of their truck and they're really PO'd and it's a real, don't know.
My second question was, I remember hearing at an earlier meeting, something about maybe a, seeing at a town meeting, the cost of our doing hazardous waste collection.
It's about a hundred dollars a household.
Isn't there, is there any way we could get piggybacked into Bennington?
We've looked into.
And save money, I mean.
It's still, the configuration of these days well preceded me. It's, and I, it doesn't make sense as we are doing this right now. It makes sense for us because we have a transfer station. But I think it's something that merits another look, particularly since we partner with Pownell. And Pownell goes all the way around Bennington to get up here.
Well, you know, it's an interesting, financially, it's, we've come from a place where we've, the budget has ranged from twelve thousand dollars, I think when I first got on the board, to maybe we're up to sixteen thousand dollars. We initially received no revenue, other than our tax revenue to pay for that. Pownell was, they run their own transfer station as we do. The state requires you to have some kind of a plan for household hazardous waste. And so both Pownell and Stamford realized that for them to host events, as the state was requiring, the cost would be prohibitive for them to set up the system at their own transfer station. So we actually set up a, a system with them where each one of those towns reimburse Shaftesbury. They're, they, I think we started at fifteen hundred dollars per event, per town. And it's now, we've gone up to, is it twenty-five hundred dollars this year, per event, per town? In addition, we get some grant money to pay for it. So one of the issues is that although we have a budget of sixteen thousand dollars, which may be the total expense, we actually are giving, getting revenue of, you know, in the neighborhood of maybe twelve thousand dollars, eleven, twelve thousand dollars between grants and the towns reimbursing us. So the, the one problem might be in going to Bennington, for instance, is naturally how much would they charge us to do it? And the fact that having it right here in our town is very beneficial to our townspeople. So, you know, we're paying maybe four thousand dollars to have the benefit of our townspeople coming in here, rather than having to go down to Bennington, for instance. Whether Bennington would charge us anything less than around four thousand dollars, I don't know. But it is a, you know, some people may say, oh, sixteen thousand dollars for household hazardous waste, but that's twice a year and it's a convenience for our residents.
Sixteen thousand is for both events?
That's for both events. That's for both events.
Margie, is the hazardous waste from the light bulbs the mercury or is it something else?
Mercury.
Is there some gas in the, in the tubes other than mercury that's?
I, mercury vapor. I'm, I'm not sure.
Any other announcements, Margie? Other than that, which is not good news? Good news that we have household hazardous waste day coming, not good news that we have people putting their trash out in the woods. It's.
Maybe, just to get the light bulbs, but I mean, the last person to touch those light bulbs is gonna leave his fingerprints on the light bulbs, I'm sure. It seems to me like it would be a relatively easy thing for the state police to track that down.
I know that they.
If they have where it came from.
They degrade fairly easily, but if they get there sooner than later. I know that there was, it seems to me that we had a case of some trash dumping a few years ago and they were able to find something in the trash that allowed them to tie it back to somebody. Am I dreaming that or did we have that in the last three or two or three?
No, that's, that's happened in the past.
Address labels.
Yeah, okay.
And you'd be presuming that, that some general contractor is also a criminal who's had his fingerprints taken, which I doubt highly.
Yeah, hey, it's worth a try.
Is, were they boxed, Margie?
I, I don't know.
You don't know?
We don't know. It's just new information.
Yeah.
Okay. I have no announcements further at this time. Conflict of interest? Does any member of the board have a conflict of interest with any item listed on the agenda?
No.
Okay. Does any member of the public have comment on any item that is not listed on the agenda this evening? Mary first. She got her hand up first, Jen. That's why, that's why I called her.
Can I make a comment?
Yes, you may.
Do I stand or sit?
Please. Please, Stan, come up to the microphone.
I'll find right here.
Just talk loud then.
I wanted to give some background because I'm big in history and background. And in the last few years, we have gone up to Mount Pelear for three different things, totally different, unrelated events up there. But we've had experience with the state legislature at its finest. And in one instance, we met two very key legislators. And they were very nice. And we spoke with them. And they told us that we had their total support. They agreed with what we were doing.
Mary, who is we?
Well, it was different for the three different episodes.
So groups of Shaftesbury residents?
Uh, one was group of Shaftesbury residents, one was not. One was another profession. Two were Shaftesbury people and one was not. Right. But two, the, two were totally unrelated, actually. And the other one is something else.
Good.
With nothing to do with Shaftesbury.
Okay.
I don't wanna have to tell who exactly. But anyway, we met these two representatives. They were not Alice Miller. They were one from up north and one from over west. And they were very nice and they agreed with what we wanted. In fact, they even suggested things to us and were sympathetic to our cause and promised to vote for us at the meeting. So that was great. We were all happy. When we went back to the meeting, the two key representatives didn't know us. Totally ignored us. And when the vote came, of course, they didn't vote for us. So what happened in between? Well, obviously lobbying had been going on, agreements had been made and things had been done. And there we were. So as I thought about it, I thought, well, I'm not really too surprised. Because I had just read a study on the internet, in fact. I don't know if it was on Yahoo or Huffington or one of them, about corruption and lack of professional ethics. And in that, in that study that they did, actually, but why I remembered it so vividly was Vermont was like number twenty-eight, way, way down in the pack. And I thought, I was really like surprised. Here, I thought Vermont would be right up there on top. And the, the key things. And the, the key things that Vermont lacked in this study were professional ethics and the failure to follow policy and procedures. And you can probably even find that study if you were to Google, I don't know. And then they said, when elected officials fail to follow normal procedure and policy, they lose respect, people no longer have confidence in their decision-making skills, and the trust factor is gone. Now, this board, over the last couple of years, has built a great deal of trust and confidence, I think, with the public, because it set certain procedures in place, and they were following them for everyone. So, I think the public generally trusted the board. Now, as you all know, and I am going to give sort of a little background, because Ken, of course, wasn't privy to some of this, uh, a few years ago, a couple of years ago, people in the, in Shaftesbury were very dissatisfied about how DRB members and Planning Commission members were appointed and selected and so on. At that point, procedures were put in place. And these procedures were followed by everyone interested, whether it was someone that was being reappointed or wanted to be reappointed, or whether it was someone new that had never served before. Everyone had to have an interview. And that became the policy, and the community accepted it as policy. And it figured that's the way it was going to be handled from now on. Also, another integral part of this procedure or policy was the fact that it was going to be posted, that all of a sudden there was going to be an opening on the Planning Commission, or the DRB, or whatever it would be. We expected it to be posted. Now, you were appointed at the last meeting for the DRB. I searched the Bennington banner, high and low. I even had a friend of mine out of the area, because I don't have high-speed search. We could not find any posting for the last DRB appointment. So, I really would respectfully, respectfully like to request a copy, if you could, Margie. Present a copy.
I, you know.
That posting.
Mary, I don't have it.
Because I did not find it.
I don't think I did. I just, I just confirmed with people that they wanted to serve again.
Because you see, Lon.
And I forgot that that was.
I remember several times Lon saying, these must be posted. And so, we naturally looked for the posting. So, I assumed it would be posted. When we saw the agenda item and it said, "Appointment DRB," it was assumed that it was an announcement, there was an opening, and that it would be an announcement, when the interview would take place, and if there were other people interested, they could come forward, because it might be quite surprising for everyone, but we have a lot of very talented, very well-educated, very interesting people here in Shaftesbury. And it would be nice to get them more involved with what's going on here. And we assumed the interview and so on, that we would just, it was just a notification, not actually an appointment. However, it was presented and deemed unnecessary for a board member to have an interview. Procedure and policy that had been established were put aside. There was no announcement of the position or an interview. And so, the interested people, that would have come forward, of course, didn't. And this failure to adhere to procedure is a big loss of respect and confidence that people have had in this board. Now, there must be a document somewhere about rules and procedure for the select board, or something that might say code of ethics for the select board. I don't know, because I couldn't find anything about that either. But it would seem, if you have code of ethics for everything else, you'd have one certainly for the select board. In that, there ought to be these procedures. They ought to be clearly written down, and they should be followed. Now, the result of that appointment, with the interview process and everything done correctly, could have been very likely the same. That's not the point. The point is, is that the process wasn't followed. The people were let down. Now, what else did I want to say? My mouth is getting so dry. Uh, I'm not going to be like Urbina, but grab a bottle of water, really. Uh, I, oh, I did want to say this. Everyone should have a chance and be treated equally. At one time, cronyism was tolerated, but it's not tolerated anymore. This board is an elected board. Hundreds of people voted for each and every one of you. They put their confidence in you. They expect that you're going to follow the rules and procedures that are set down. And when you don't, you lose your trust and you lose your confidence. That's what I have to say.
Thank you, Mary. I would like to actually respond to Mary's comments. Shortly after the last meeting, Mary did communicate with me directly, and, um, and I wanted to let the board know how that communication went afterwards. I have to, I want to, and I was going to bring this up other, under other business tonight, so that's why I haven't addressed it yet. I need to, I feel I need to apologize to the board. I think that I, as a newbie, as, on the, as the chair of the board, and I realized this as the meeting was progressing, and as we were beginning to discuss this topic, that I feel that I kind of came up short and should have suggested doing exactly what Mary just described. And I feel that, and I kind of, um, once the horse was, the proverbial horse was out of the barn, it was like, then it was like dumb, I said, oh, man, this is not going the way it should. We've had a procedure, we've set this up in the past, and we should have done it, we should have had our candidates come in and at least sit down and talk with us. I won't for a second say that the three candidates, one for the DRB and two for the Planning Commission that were appointed, I believe that they're solid candidates, and as Mary indicated, my gut is, is that we would have had no different final outcome than what we ended up with. But by the same token, I think that we should have at least followed the procedure that we had done, and I, and I think that with a lack of proper leadership on my part, we didn't end up getting there. And I apologize to the board for that. And as I told Mary, I will promise to endeavor to do better on that sort of thing going forward. So, with that being said, you know, it is, the proverbial horse is out of the barn at this point, but, and again, I, I hope that the, the board and the community will allow me to try to redeem myself for that shortcoming, not leading in the right direction at our last meeting.
Well, and I.
You're totally right.
No, I was just going to make my own statement, which is, you know, it was, that was a difficult evening. And for me, in hindsight, you know, I heard, I kept hearing what Billy said, which is, you know, we talked about this in the past, which of course, we have done it in the past. It was a little unique in terms of the situation. We had already gone through a very lengthy review process with a number of candidates for a number of openings. And we also did have, you know, when it, it was brought to us that night, and we did have the chair of the DRB, and we do have a very new development review board. And I think some of that is a result of the policies that we had put in place, or, I shouldn't say, it was procedures that we had talked about, because I don't think it actually is a policy, a written policy, as to how it would be handled. But that was certainly stated very clearly by the new chair to us, and that weighed very heavily on me that evening. And I, and I did, you know, think, well, you know, we could go through this interview process, um, and what would the outcome be? Now, whether that was right or wrong, it certainly caused me to question myself after the fact. I do believe that the ultimate outcome was probably the outcome that we would have had, had we waited several more weeks to go through the process. And again.
You know, we have a stability, uh, policy.
Yes.
That we spent many meetings on.
Yes, we did.
And we certainly should have a policy then for this, and it should be written down.
Well, you're probably, I think you're right. It should be written down.
I mean, Norman had to have an interview for the Planning Commission for a position that really nobody wanted. I mean, it was required.
Okay. As I said, it wasn't, like I said, from my perspective, it was a shortcoming. We did come up short. You're, I don't believe that you're, I believe that your comments are right on point.
The, a year ago, we had a recommendation that we do adopt a written appointment policy, and I think it was, it just took a backseat to the conflict of interest policy.
As well as some of the other matters.
Right.
It is back on the list of things to accomplish. Again, unfortunately, after the fact, maybe where it should have been, but I have it back on my list of things to address.
Well, it is a policy in terms of the fact of past practice, and that it has been initiated and done, but it isn't actually down.
Not formalized.
Right. And.
Right. And it should be.
But thank you for, thank you for your input. It's well taken. Jerry?
Um, well, first of all, I want to say, I do, to a certain extent, I, I kind of second what Mary said. That wasn't what my original comment was going to be about, I didn't know she was bringing that here today. But I do agree, and I understand that, um, the chair of the D V spoke up and supported not going through the interview process. But I kind of sat here, and I probably should have spoke up, but I kept thinking, I must just have missed the announcement of the position being open, and that people were subject or invited to apply. I know we had some people who had applied for the positions that got filled earlier, but was kind of curious.
That's when it, see, that's when it was discussed.
See, and I think that I.
It was, I don't know if you were at that meeting, but when they were making appointments prior to town meeting, the discussion was what to do with the one remaining vacancy. And it was said, let's wait till after town meeting. So, it was, yeah, you know, all said and done, it was slightly atypical, what I'd experienced.
Yeah, I just, I just missed it, because I, and I thought the people who had applied for the first positions, then, since they didn't get chosen, didn't want to be bothered going through the process again and not being selected again. But then I learned that that was not the case. And there might have been somebody else who might have come out of it and said, okay, you know, I'll just throw my hat in the ring, I might get taken, or you at least know that I'm interested if some vacancy comes up. The other thing that I wanted to bring up, something totally different, and that's that the first meeting for 2013 of the Shaftesbury Garden Club, which is going to be a nice, pleasant experience, I hope, will be held on Wednesday, April 10th, at the Shaftesbury Methodist Church. And as many people know who've heard me before, the garden club's a pretty small group, and because it's a small group, our focus is pretty limited in maintaining the whole town garden, and the garden up by the historical society, the old Baptist church. We tried to do some things by the Galusha House, but the group is small, so we don't usually get very much done. We've done some work, but not much. It's an invitation for new people who might like to join the garden club, who have an interest in gardening, or in just helping us dig some holes and put plants in, weeding, whatever they would like to do. We really don't have a formal process of, like, speeches and things like that, because the group is just too small. So, we just focus on really maintaining the town garden. But I really encourage people to come, it's a nice group of people, get to meet some of the older town residents, will put some of us younger people to shame. So, really, I hope somebody would come and join us. So, Wednesday, April 13, April 10th, at 2:00 PM.
And where is it, where is it?
At the Methodist Church.
At the Methodist.
Thank you, Jerry.
You're welcome.
Are there any other public comments? Mike?
Yeah, hi, Mike Foley. I'm going to carry on with what Mary mentioned earlier, and some of the things Ken said tonight about having things black and white, and Craig saying, you know, earlier this year, saying, hey, if you guys are, if there are people in the public who are interested in joining these boards, we really need people to join the boards, and to either put up or you-know-what. And, you know, with the risk of embarrassing myself, my application has been in, I mean, I have, um, requested a position. Now, where that leaves me, again, throwing myself out there, I guess that means, you know, I assumed it was a new board. The app, the request I put in to be on it Development and Review Board, didn't have a date on it that said, I want to take over for so-and-so's position. So, and also, I have to take exception to Karen and Craig about things like, I'm sure it would have turned out this way anyway. That's, if you want to inhibit people from coming, that's the things you said. That's not going to encourage people to come out and put themselves in front of a board at the risk of, again, you know, putting, you know, doing something they've never done before, because they've got someone up who's been in town, who's been on these boards for so many years, was automatically going to, everyone assumes, obviously, that he's a better candidate. So, I'm disappointed, and, uh, my request is still in. I was interviewed by a different board, and there was other members who were also interviewed by different boards. And that night, on that agenda, it did not say reappointment, or, I thought that was a congratulatory thing towards Ken to say, hey, you know, we have new members. And of course, I'm sitting next to, um, Megan Donkers, who is the chair of the DRB that said, I really want, uh, David Manson to serve. But honestly, she said that about me, too, because she forwarded me on me to you. So, I don't know if it's water under the bridge, or, I'm confused. I, I don't know how this could happen after all the complaints of lack of transparency and, um, get off your butt and get on a board, and then you hear, well, you probably wouldn't have made it anyway. It's better you didn't come. Or it's pretty much the same thing's going to happen anyway, or always a mistake. Mistakes happen another three years. You know? And I go along with Ken, I want things more black and white. There was nothing, on paper, there was nothing. I thought it was April. If I would have had to, I would have said, fine, put my, redo my letter, and put me back in. As far as I'm concerned, I'm still in. The board changed. So, I don't know how this can still be water under the bridge if, where's, where's my letter? And it was before a board in the past that said, I want to be on Development and Review Board. I was interviewed, I thought I had a great interview. Again, I'm embarrassing myself, because obviously, none of you thought so. But there was a number of people who did apply, so I'm willing to say, no, they were better candidates. But I'm not going to sit back every time and say, well, I'm sure that guy's going to be a better candidate, too. You know, um, I don't know, I, like I said, I, I feel like we do a lot of volunteer work in the town, my family, and, uh, I don't know. It's April 1st, I didn't know today was actually the last day or the first day of David Manson's position.
Actually, in the minutes, it says April, his terms up in.
Yeah, so, I don't know. I'm confused, I want an explanation, not just it won't happen again, because we keep getting that. We've gotten that before.
Well, I, I'm really, you know, there's a part of this, though, as I listen, yes, we made a mistake in not, and frankly, we had, um, you know, a new board chair, a new configuration of the board. This board worked very hard in a town garage bond that went down. There was a lot, a lot happening, um, and did it maybe fall through the cracks? Yes, it definitely fell through the cracks. I think that the board, the previous board to this, which had the majority of the members that are here now, um, followed that policy. We instituted, you know, I'll call it a policy, a procedure, I will say, because we tried to get it into black and white, and it just didn't happen as something, you know, something to work from. We did have a new board chair, there was a sense we needed to get folks on, you know, onto boards, or make their appointments when we realized everything had, 2013, here we are, Planning Commission members' terms have expired. We placed, and we have a DRB now, with the majority of new members. And it's because of your, you know, I will say, your group, you know, I don't want to say your group, but a group of Shaftesbury residents coming forward with a lot of issues around the DRB, and how it was, um, and how they were handling issues before them, and the residents of the town. And I believe that we listened very carefully, very closely. We made some decisions that resulted in a very, very changed board. One of those very new members, I think, is working extremely hard. One of those very new members, I think, is working extremely hard and very successfully to get herself up to speed, get other new members up to speed. They are agreeing to education that we have made very clear, we think is really important. And we had that board chair come to us and very specifically say that it will be very damaging to this new board, that we worked very hard, frankly, to put together. If you go through that process-
Of an interview.
Of the interview between the DRB and then coming back to the Select Board, we, you were here when she said that, that it will be damaging to the board. And we're, the board is very vulnerable right now, and that, as I said before, that weighed, for me personally, that weighed very heavily. We need a functioning Development Review Board. And Michael, your name was before us. You were considered very carefully, along with all of the other candidates at the time, we were looking to fill the positions. And, you know, for you to say it's happened time and time again, that's not clear to me. This time, yes, in hindsight, you know, now whether it would have meant that we would have had three resignations or whatever from the Development Review Board, I don't know. I have to weigh, I have to weigh all of the interests of the town, and-
The interests of the town are interviews.
Well, the interests of the town for the Development Review Board is a, is a fair, functioning Development Review Board.
Right. And the people of the town, and when I said that this has happened in the past, I wasn't referring to you or to this board. I'm talking about the town and its disappointment in the past two years over a lot of issues. And it is, so, don't worry, we're going to fix this problem. We're going to fix this problem. Not that you yourself have a problem, or this board exclusively has a problem. I just think the interests of the town members that you just mentioned are interviews and sticking with black and white, where people don't need lawyers, where they know when they come in what to expect, not because, well, I felt a certain way that night. That's what I'm saying. That way everybody understands.
I agree.
You're not talking to me. It's the whole town.
I agree. I agree.
One person should not have that much influence.
Actually, there was, there was, what I will say is this, as I said earlier, I am not convinced that we did everything that we, exactly the way we should have, based on history. I've already mentioned that, as Karen. This was a decision, though, and I'm not certain of the one person that has that much power. In this case, there was five of us on the board that weighed in on that decision.
Because of one person.
Yeah. No. Not at all. The decision that was made, was made by a five-member panel. Whether we did it exactly as we should have or as precedent has been set, that, that's a discussion we've already had. The decision to appoint these three, these three members was made by the five of us who were elected by you to do that. Again, whether we should have done it the way we did it, open for discussion. I'm going to say that I probably lean to the side of the fence that you and Michael are making. However, that was who made the decision. It didn't have anything to do outside of that. We made the decision as a board based on that night's, where we were at that night.
And that's-
And we have to-
...this policy in writing-
Exactly.
So one person can-
I'm reading right now.
Yes, and I will concur with you on that, and that, I believe that that, I think we all agree on that.
I'm writing right now.
Right. Thank you, and thank you again. I take this criticism personally, as I should, and I, and I am always willing to take it. If you, if you want to bring it to me, I'll, I'll take it, and hopefully that, you know, I can improve the way I'm, that I provide the leadership to the board. Thank you for that. Are there any other public comments? If not, the next item on the agenda is our annual highway financial plan and highway grants.
Every year, the VTrans asks its towns, or the towns across the state, to demonstrate that we are spending a certain amount of money as prescribed by statutes to maintain our roads. And it's a very antiquated statute, and the form that we have to fill out, as Carl has pointed out, really doesn't make a lot of sense. We have to justify that we're spending at least $300 per mile, for each mile of Class 1, 2, and 3 town highways, which we are indeed. So the state has forwarded to us a form that says that on the revenue side, we might expect state aid, and that the state aid amount that they predict we will receive is about $6,000 above and beyond what we budgeted, which is-
From them, you mean?
Yes. So that was good news. Then it merely asks us to document, it just to break up the budget and how we display what's winter maintenance, what's general maintenance, whatever, then move down to the bottom and describe whatever major projects you're planning. Very simple, straightforward plan, but it does need your signatures. And so I am needing you to do that, if you so choose. And the attachments that would go with that form would include the grant application for the paving grant. I have an estimate, which our foreman did collect, a budget estimate of approximately $165,000 to pave from the North Bennington Line up to Rollin Road, inclusive of reclaiming to an eight-inch depth. And then between the binder and top course, we'd have four inches of new pavement. The maximum grant, we won't make this mistake again as once before, the maximum grant from the state would be $175,000. And that will constitute either 70% or 80% of the costs of the project, depending on whether or not we have an up-to-date inventory of all of our culverts and infrastructure. So we, we had done one. It's, it's almost three years old or needs to be updated, so I would like the crew to work on that on rainy days. It's rainy day activity. And apart from that, I think we meet the criteria for 80% funding. So that's what's going to be an attachment to the-
Margie.
Yes?
When you said inventory, or I forget, something you said about culverts?
What, what the state wants us to be doing is to make sure that we have a game plan to keep our infrastructure up to date.
Okay.
So I know that the crew has, in the past, inventoried all our culverts and identified their locations on every single road.
Mm-hmm.
And we actually have a map which shows this. And we've been pretty good about keeping that map up to date.
Okay.
As we replace them, we mark it, make a little mark.
And you're saying it's what, you're saying it's like a steel cover, plastic cover?
Yeah. Right.
When it was last, when it was last-
What is there, what-
Yes, yeah.
Should be changed or what?
Right. So all we really-
If they're plugged or not, you know, currently.
Yeah.
So all we need to do is make sure that it's up to date. I, I think I'd like to broaden it a little bit to signage. I want to make sure that our traffic control signage, signage is what it should be. And Lord knows, they've been very aware of when we're losing street signs, so that's really not an issue.
Excuse me. Is there a, is there a place in there, or is there a place to record not just the presence and structure of a cover, but whether it is adequate-
Yeah, it's condition-
Current standards for height and width?
We have four categories that note its condition, and then oftentimes, if they're below, let's say, 18 inches, the crew, 18 inches or below, the crew will do it. Otherwise, we have to contract out the work and need a stream alteration permit.
Well, as a result of the last two storms that occurred in Vermont, there's been a lot of discussion about culverts, their ability to carry floodwaters. So, so everybody's pretty up to date on it.
Yeah. A year from now, we're going to have, had to have adopted new state standards. And the language will particularly address the sizing of culverts.
But it does, at this point, that's not the case.
We've been, everybody's been sent the standard, but we have a year to look at them and consider them.
There's a lot of concern around that.
Yeah.
A lot of concern from highway crews around the state, because some of those standards are somewhat onerous in terms of the amount that it will cost. And, and the problem is that if you don't, if you don't accept the standards, then your reimbursement from the state can be reduced based on that. And yet, they're not proposing to increase funding in order for you to bring, you know, bridges up to standard or, you know, to fulfill some of these minimum standard obligations. So a lot of, a lot of road foremen are pretty concerned around the state-
Losing some sleep over this.
Saying, we're not sure it's worth signing these, these agreements.
Well, you have to look at the other side of it, which is, if you do have a storm and a flood, what's the cost to people who lose property and lives?
Well, it's true. It's true. It's true. But it also has an impact on the taxpayer when you go out in March and say, we're upping the highway budget $50,000 because we have to meet the state's standards. Sometimes it can be a hard sell.
Wouldn't it be mandated when they needed to be changed again? Or, I mean, you wouldn't just start replacing them in and out, you know, if this-
Well, they required, if you're doing any rebuilding of a road or maintenance, even, you know, if we were putting fabric on a road, if you're doing any major work on a road, it all has to be done to state standard, so.
So it does have a potentially big financial impact. On the front side, conceivably, the idea, their, their argument is, is that it eliminates the financial consequence or reduces it on the backside in event we have another major issue like we had.
It sounds like what Mary was just talking about, unfunded million dates.
Yes.
Right. Do you need a motion for us to accept this, or?
Yes.
Okay.
I would, I would entertain a motion.
I would make a motion that we accept the annual financial plan for our town highways.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? There being none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? That would be 4-0. Our next item up for discussion tonight is the bid openings for highway equipment purchases.
No, we're tabling that until the 15th.
Okay, then we're not going to have that discussion tonight.
You're right.
Sorry, I worked off the wrong, I'm working off the wrong document. Okay. The next item is actually town officer appointments. These are for the non, for the appointments other than DRB and Planning Commission. These are, the ones that we have open for tonight are, that we're going to discuss this evening, are, I got to pull this document up here. There's three of them. Emergency management coordinator, the energy coordinator, and the tree warden for the town.
Now, I, you know, having had this, just this discussion about advertising these, these have not been advertised. The pub, the health officer vacancy's been up.
For years.
That's been up. So I suggest that we put these up.
I don't have a problem with that. And again, for if no other reason than for to cover the points that were made this evening.
Yep.
I will tell you, the incumbents have all said they are interested in serving the one research that is warranted, that one research piece or whatever. The town service officer, the incumbent is not willing to serve, but she also said that basically that the new agency of human resources line, their contact emergency line of 211, has meant that she doesn't get any calls for people that are seeking assistance, public assistance with housing, emergency needs, whatever. We only got that one request for fuel assistance this year. What I will do is to verify with the state as to whether or not they still seek a town service officer. And I was incorrect, Craig, when I said that we got a form that was for only the health officer.
Okay.
So something, this is all morphing as we are thinking about, I'll report back on the 15th.
Okay. Thank you.
Did you say you have somebody interested for the health officer position?
No, we don't, Barry. You want to come talk to me?
That was a conversation, I hate to talk out of school, but that was a conversation that Margie and I had the other day, that maybe we would ask you, given your background as a medical professional, to see if it might be something that you might possibly entertain. But we'll, we'll talk about that another time.
Was it, was the last one Barth Mandor?
Yes.
Mm-hmm. And he had done it, oh, three or four years at least?
At least. Many, I think longer than that, possibly.
Well, Jim, Jim Carroll did it for a number of years before Barth. Yeah, and Barth was at least four years.
Maybe if I can't do it myself, I can maybe facilitate.
Yeah. My experience has been working with retired nurses, physicians, or somebody closely related to the planning zoning arena that, that is out doing a lot of inspections.
We could do that.
But that is, that is a position that has been open for a number of years, actually, or since-
Well, just a year.
Or just a year now, and so it is something that we are in need of and would like to have someone that would be, if there's someone interested. Okay. Next item. We're looking at our conflict of interest policy. We're up to our third reading on this document tonight, which I believe would be the last of the, I think it requires three readings and comment, if, if any. So.
The discussions left off February 13th. No, February 4th. With Lon asking for feedback from everybody with respect to a policy on apparent versus actual conflict of interest. The question is whether select board members would not ever be able to do business with the town, I'm reading from our minutes, or would simply be required to disclose any conflict of interest that might arise. And the board agreed informally that select board members should not be prohibited from appearing before the board as private citizens if they are personally impacted. And our Chair at the time agreed that he would further revise the language, but I have not seen that, that particular revision, and I didn't know if a board member had received anything. I've sent an email to him asking for that, but it might be one, one aspect of our review tonight to note that this is still pending from February 4th.
Right.
I'd ask the question, if, if Lon didn't provide it during the period of his election, is it appropriate for the board to take it now that he's no longer on the board?
No.
I mean, just like anybody else could submit something. He's a, he's a-
That's right.
Yeah.
Well, I think, my opinion would be, is that we could take a document that he's revised, but then we would have to review it ourselves and deem that it's still what we want to say. We couldn't take it just verbatim and, and move it forward, you know, without, with just, like, if he emails it this week, and then we, we couldn't just act on it and move it forward. We would have to officially have to bring it-
Yeah.
And say that it's ours.
I guess my point would be-
You have to take action to do this tonight.
Yeah, I understand. But if we're taking a recommendation, we're waiting possibly for a recommendation for, from a resident.
Or not.
Or not.
Or not.
Or not. Okay.
I wasn't, I, I thought I was hearing-
I did send an email out.
Yeah.
Just to see if it had been done, but I just had forgotten to send it on a full town meeting.
Right, because that was, that was my understanding, was that he was, he was actually working off of our direction at the time, that, you know, he would take it back based on some of the comments we had made that last night, and he would incorporate it in for the final reading.
I remember, I remember that well. I'm, I'm only saying that if we are going to wait for his comments, we should invite the rest of the public to submit their comments. Why are we waiting for just one person? Why are we waiting for just one person's comments who's no longer on the board? That's my other point.
Well, I think anybody can submit comments.
Granted.
I don't have-
But they weren't invited to.
Yeah.
Well, they, certainly, public record, it's here. It's been available if people-
So, what would people like to do?
I guess as long as we're talking conflict of interest, I would have a question. Seeing as how that I am a contractor, I have done contract work for the town before. This is why, as I say here, I would handle if I wanted to do a bid with you guys, with the town. That I would submit the bid and then recuse myself from the board when the bid came up. Would that be what I would, I would think that would be the right way to do it.
In really simplistic terms, you would be right on course for that. You would have to recuse yourself when the matter came up for discussion, at the time that the, as I would see it, at the time that it came for bid opening. Let's say you had chosen to bid on a project the town was doing.
Right.
When that came up, you know, at the beginning of the meeting, you'd say, "I'm going to recuse myself from that when it comes up."
Right.
At that point, you'd step away from the table-
Yeah.
-from the back of the room, not be involved in, while we're here, or any discussion involved. And then also, as you probably are beginning to see, generally, we'll open the bid one night, and then usually, like, the following meeting is when we actually will award it.
Yeah.
The following meeting is the same thing. When that matter came up, you would step away from the, you would have to step away from the board and not be involved in any fashion.
Exactly.
And that would also include no communication regarding the topic with any member of the board, or Margie-
Yeah.
...during the process.
Yeah, I wouldn't, no.
I mean, that's, again, simplistic terms.
Right.
There's more details involved.
Well, it's the only right way to do it. I know.
Well, you know, this brings up one of the problems in the current draft that I do remember Lon was going to take a look at, because I had raised it. If you look at Article 5(c), and you look at Article 6(b), and, I mean, essentially, the two, you know, one is contrary to the other. Because in the, with the situation that Kenny just mentioned, "A public officer shall not personally or through any member of his or her household, business associate, employer or employee, represent, appear for, or negotiate in a private capacity on behalf of any person or organization in any cause, proceeding, application, or other matter pending before the public body in which the officer holds office or is employed," says he will not. So, you, basically, I read that as Kenny couldn't negotiate for himself. Maybe I'm wrong. But Article 6(b) then says, "In the event a public officer personally or through any member of the household, business associate, employer or employee represents, appears for, negotiates in a private capacity on behalf of any person or organization in any cause, proceeding, application, or other matter pending before the public body in which the officer holds office," which is very similar to the language before. "The public officer shall disclose his/her relationship to that body. In such cases, the public officer shall not sit with the remaining members of the public body and shall not be included in any deliberations other than to the extent that all applicants and/or members of the public are included." So, essentially, that's saying that, I mean, the first one is saying-
You can't do it.
Can't. That he can't. And then Article 6(b) says, "Well, as long as he discloses that there's a conflict of interest, he can."
So, basically, they just have to align.
We need to, we need to come to some kind of agreement as to how we handle, because I don't think you can have both of those sections within the same document.
Carl's point being taken, it would be my suggestion that we, as Margie has solicited the document from the former chair, if he has provided any work on that, or it is a document that they're waiting, I would suggest that we bring it back so that we don't, from our own standpoint and for our townsfolk, that we don't spend any more time than we need to rehashing something that's already been discussed. But I do believe that Carl's point is correct, that we would need to bring it back into our discussion, decide that it is what we, as the new board, wanted to say before we move it forward again.
Actually, Carl's point was, the entire town should be invited to comment on this, and that if anyone in the town chooses to send comments on this point or any other, they should be submitted along with that other towns person that is submitting his comments to the board.
Then I don't think you are due that.
Here's that, or we could take up the draft.
Well, here's the other thing we can do. The other thing we can do is, because I think that this was, as I remember, unless anyone else recalls, there were a couple of different, you know, a couple little additions of words, which I have in my notes, Margie probably does too. But perhaps that question could be posed to VLCT, to the legal folks up at VLCT, because they've been, you know, I think some of the, I know a lot of the language frankly came from the VLCT model policy.
I'm wondering, Karen, I'm wondering for the sake of all of our sanity-
Yep.
-maybe we take where we were at and incorporate the comments that maybe that you have noted in them, and then bring it back and we handle these. I, the comment that you made about the two conflicting statements, that's one we discussed. I don't think, it's going to take a lot of time to resolve those. They just need to say the same thing, or one needs to go away so they're not conflicting.
Right. I think the difference between the two is dramatic, though.
Oh, very definitely. One says no, one says yes.
That's right.
Yeah, that matters.
One says that Kenny could not negotiate-
Bid on a job.
You couldn't bid on a job, basically.
But then the other one says he could, as long as he tells us.
That's right.
Well, if I had you a bid with my name, that'd be fairly obvious, I would think.
Absolutely. But what it's saying is, is that one of them says that you couldn't even do it.
Yeah, no, I understand that.
And the other one says, "Well, yeah, you can't."
That wouldn't be right either.
Right. So, my suggestion would be, and again, not to eliminate the town's input, which they have already provided input on this, and to remove the appearance of impropriety, it probably would be best that we just take the draft that we have and move it forward based on the notes we have and then revisit it.
You know, I will say, the town has been, maybe not presently, but this goes back, it was right after, you know, soon after I got on the board. This was a final draft ready for select board review, June 6th, 2005.
Lord. All the more reason that we should just move it forward.
We had VLCT come down here, we had a training session, and they, you know, I mean, their feelings frankly at the time were much stricter isn't right, the right word, really, but they just didn't think any possible fence setting should occur in terms of conflict of interest, that anyone that had a conflict of interest should not only not be present at the table, they should not be present in the room when those issues were being discussed. And, you know, the fact of the matter is, I think the concern is that a board could be swayed by one of their fellow board members, even if they were sitting out in the audience and a decision had to be made that would impact that individual. So, that was where VLCT was coming from. They said, you know, just removing the person from the table and sitting them in the audience may not be enough to, you know, to really clarify the situation. So, it's, you know, it's a hard issue in a small town. You have, you really have to weigh-
Small town. There's some realities of, you know, some reality has to come into play too, which, that may or may not, that extent may or may not be really truly applicable in a common sense standpoint.
Yeah. Common sense. Exactly.
Carl, your thoughts?
I'm reading the two paragraphs that Karen is concerned about, that Lon was going to write. That was paragraph, I just want to make sure I'm reading the right ones. That's paragraph 5d and 6b. Is that correct?
It was 6b and 5c is what-
5c.
Yeah.
"A public officer shall-"
If it's the same draft.
I think it is. It's the one I got in the email.
Yeah.
"...shall not personally or through any member of his or her household associates or represent, appear for, or negotiate in a private capacity on behalf of any person, organization, application, or that the holder holds office."
Then the next one says, "In the event they personally represent or appear, they must disclose their..."
Would a member of the board be able to take the note, take what we know to be the case now, and maybe Karen's notes, and maybe do some updates to bring those current, so we bring it back a document that would seem to eliminate, that seems to be the one, I'll call it major question that we had remaining from my recollection, and then we bring it back and hope to move it forward?
Sure. I will, I will try to do that. Maybe between Margie and I would, if you have anything additional. And I concern, you know, I mean, if it's all right with the board, I wouldn't mind calling VLCT and just having some fun.
I want to ask Carl. It would seem to me that in this issue of appearance of conflict, we've got a definition of conflict of interest. I think we need a definition of appearance of conflict?
Well, I know that, I believe that we, we had some rather lengthy definitions of-
Carl led those, or was actively involved?
I have, I can give you a definition that I lived with for a long time, but it may not be adequate enough for here. And the definition that I always lived by was pretty simplistic. It is, "What a reasonable person, having knowledge of all the relevant facts, would consider to be the appearance of a conflict." In other words, the example that's often given is if you went to lunch with the lawn mowing guy for the cemetery, and somebody from the town saw you sitting at, I don't know, at downtown Kevin's, and you were having lobster, and they were having lobster, and they both knew that you were going to be the person making the presentation, would they consider that to be an appearance of conflict? Often, people say, "Oh, but of course." But that would be, "Oh, but of course," until you had all the relevant facts, or you found out that you were buying him lunch, or you were paying for each other's lunch, or you were, or you had, you had just resigned from being the town administrator. Those would be the relevant facts. If, in fact, there's no more to it, yeah, there probably would be the appearance. But once there are other facts that suggest that you are getting no benefit out of it, and a reasonable person wouldn't think that you'd get a benefit out of it, there's no appearance. That's why it has to be what a reasonable person, having knowledge of all the relevant facts, would consider to be a conflict.
That's, in my world, that makes sense.
So, I'll ask you for that language.
Yeah.
I'll ask you to send that along.
But I recall when we, when-
We had almost that-
Well, we had a much more lengthy one that came from the state that I just drug my shoulders that I can't-
Okay.
All right. So, we can, we can-
Let's redraft it and just update it to where we, where we think we're at, and then we'll revisit it and hopefully finalize it.
Yep.
Make this go away after eight years.
What timeframe?
Our agenda for the April 15th looks, is filling up quickly. Let's do it for the first meeting.
Okay.
Does that timeframe work?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay. Moving right along. We've been asked for a letter of support from the Baton Kill Valley Health Center. This is a new facility that is looking to be established in Arlington. Members of the board, actually, it may, I'm not sure, it may even predate Carl's time on the board. I'm not certain. We had a very similar, basically the same request of us several years ago. And I'm going to let Margie give the details, but the short term is, is they're looking to develop a clinic for people who are underserviced or unserviced.
I don't think this is to develop, it's to continue-
Or to continue.
To be eligible for funding.
Okay. Well, then I'll let you, let you continue.
That's all it is. So, the, the name is now Baton Kill Valley Health Center. And this was, the appeal back in October of 2010, was basically to fill a niche of need for primary care services and community mental health services, and that we're very underserved in certain capacities. And the select board wrote a letter of support. So, basically, what I've done with this second request, don't reinvent the wheel if you don't have to. So, this letter speaks to continuing to be eligible for funding.
Yeah.
That we support on behalf of that. We've sent our support fulfilling an important void in the healthcare delivery infrastructure of Benton County. Until the establishment of this health center, there had been no qualified community health clinic in any, in the county where 12% of the population leaves, lives at poverty level. At poverty levels, at or below. So, Anex, you get the drift, and I send it around, so I guess-
Yeah, no, I think it's great. I mean, this is Michael Welter, who's, you know, Arlington was Arlington Family Practice. He's working very hard to try to sustain health services to folks in this community that, you know, really don't have good access or easy access to care. And, you know, we all know what the funding is like for everything. It keeps going down and down, so I think whatever leg up we can help to give them in grant applications, the better. So, do we need a motion?
I don't think so. I mean, if you show your support and then Craig-
Consensus of the board, is there, is the board's support to this initiative that we send a letter of support to them indicating?
Yep.
I don't, I only know about this person and what he's trying to do based on what I've read in the paper. And it sounds wonderful. But I, since I don't, I don't personally know that I can recommend somebody in the health field that I don't know from my own personal experience, or have more than, more than what I read in the newspaper, I probably would want to abstain.
Margie, are we asking, is it a recommendation of him individually, or is it a recommendation of-
No, it's going to be going-
Trying to develop this clinic?
He would be-
Or does that make any difference to your argument, Carl?
The clinic would be showing this, you need a letter of support, as one of many in their applications for grant funds and/or to private supporters for donations. This is-
It's my understanding, this would be the support of the, of an initiative to try to accomplish this, as I've understood it.
Right.
But, again, not trying to sway you, I just, I don't think we're recommending him as a physician. I think we're recommending that there be-
The establishment of a-
I thought he and, he and the health, the health clinic are really synonymous.
No. He, he's trying, I mean, this is frankly for him. He actually came and presented to the select board, must have been right before you maybe got on the board, when it came around the first time, and then all the grant money dried up. But this is a way for him to sustain that medical, that medical, not so much the practice, but some kind of a medical clinic presence in this community after he's gone.
Well, it says to encourage your financial support for the efforts of Doc. Michael Welter.
And his peers.
I, I, you have enough to vote for it. I will be abstaining.
That's fine. Again, I just wanted-
I was just trying to explain.
I understand.
Not sway, as Carl said. Barry has a question that he might be-
Is this a clinic that's similar to the clinic in Bennington, the Bennington Free Clinic?
Correct.
Someone? I don't, I don't know that it's a free clinic. I'm not sure. There was a lot of, I know Bernie Sanders was really trying to get federal funding for community health centers, because there was such a need, because primary care doctors were closing out practices.
I went to that meeting, I was at the Unitarian Church a couple of years ago-
Okay.
When Bernie was here, and he talked about that.
Yes.
And he had, he had Peter King talk, and-
Yes.
And Mike Welter, and I think a couple of other people in the community who run programs for people who are outside the traditional system of healthcare.
Right.
And, you know, I don't want to say any, I really shouldn't say anything, and I won't say anymore about, about this particular project, but I-
Why don't we get Dr. Welter back in here?
Yeah, I just don't want to think that if I, that the town giving them an assent in this matter is going to commit us to supporting them in some way in the future or endorsing it. I mean, I think the proof is in the, is in the, when he gets the thing up and running, if it works, that's fine. And it is more than he. I mean, he's got PAs and nurse practitioners, I think, and so I think it probably is something the community needs. something the community needs.
Well, you know, Margie's suggestion is to ask Michael to come in and present with that.
He did a very succinct presentation, and there was, in answer, there was a reason that this was distinguished from something different than the Bennington Free Clinic, and I don't recall the details. There was some reason that this was a different animal. I don't recall the details.
I think it's because he has regular patients like myself, who go to him as a regular patient, and I'm not part of the free, the other part of the clinic.
Yeah, there, there was some distinctions...
Yes, regular patients as well as...
Because he, he actually discussed some of those things at length, that this was something that, again, I shouldn't even, I can't, like, I should...
See if we can get him.
Let's see if we can get him in here. Let's talk to him.
We'll do that, May 8th.
Because I think it'd be good for, if we're on camera, for the community to have an opportunity to hear him, too.
Does there be members of the community that are interested in what he has, what he has to offer?
Sure.
It is, it is appropriate. All right. As I'm looking at the remaining agenda items this evening, and the fact where, again, we're missing Mr. Obenar, who had, unfortunately, or unfortunately for us, but fortunately for him, he's struggling through his educational endeavor and could not make it tonight. I'm going to suggest that, based on those things, that we may, again, table the select board liaison assignments for this evening in the interest of both of those reasons. Do I have a, do I have support of that?
Yes.
Yep.
Okay. All right. Then the next item that I have, and I wanted to make sure we get a few minutes to discuss this, is the town garage committee, status and a little background. Karen has presented, or prepared some information on, I know her and Ken, amongst others in the community, got together last week.
Yeah.
And I know Karen put together some notes from the following up on that, so I wanted to make sure we allotted time for this most valuable topic. I'd like to see if you can, I'll give you 15 minutes, how does that work?
Whoa.
How's that? You think you'll need that long?
I don't know, I don't know. It depends on how much Kenny has to say and Barry, who's...
I don't, I'd say, what I got to say, I say short and sweet.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, well, now you...
You're good, you're good at this.
I can certainly make them available to the, to anyone that's here. You got the minutes? I had sent minutes out to everyone.
Yes.
And I actually had sent out, Barry had had a wonderful summary of the meeting also. We did meet last Wednesday, there were, I don't know, maybe, well, there were quite a few of us, actually, maybe 12 or 14 of us there. We had two select board members, Margie was there, we had our road foreman, one of our road crew, other road crew, Ron Jennings, Barry Mayer, Harold Baldwin, John Endres, Michael Gardner, Lon McClintock, Ron Shuf, and...
David Beach.
David Beach, David Beach, yeah. We have a few other members, folks who would like to be a part of this from our previous facility committee, actually, our, our facility committee. This is now the highway or town garage committee, specific to this project. But Ben Benedict and Rick Kobic were unable to attend due to other obligations. We first went over our meeting schedules. We've agreed that we should be meeting every other week, at least initially to begin. So the meeting time has been set for the, now I'm drawing a blank, if it's the second, the second and fourth Wednesday of every month, at 6:30 at Cole Hall. Right, Kenny?
Yep.
And we would welcome anyone, any member of the community to join us, if there are others who would like to be a part of the committee. We do have several who are interested in working on some of the, I'll call it the public relations aspect, Barry and Lon and Michael Gardner, in terms of, you know, making sure we can get our columns into the banner, at least monthly, announcing our meetings. We will have meeting schedules, agendas posted and sent into the banner. At our first meeting, we did a brief timeline review, the project timeline to date, talked about the expenses to date that we've, you know, going back to even our first grant back in 2009, I think, that began to take a look at the Cole Hall and the garage, and then we centered on the garage because of the greater needs there. And again, we talked about our community outreach and communication. We talked about our own perceptions of why we thought the bond went down. And opinions, you know, were very strong, I would say, everyone said that it was cost and the size. And, you know, we're discussing, we will continue to discuss, how can we meet the needs and keep the cost below whatever that magic point is? Nobody really knows. But we know 1.5 million is too much. We discussed taking a look at different materials, different ways of building a salt shed. We looked at a, you know, a original construction that would look at a salt shed that we felt would be durable enough to last, you know, 40, 50, 60 years without problems. Perhaps we'll take a look at the type of building, and you've all seen them, that have the fabric roofs, which probably, and, well, most likely, the initial, you know, short-term cost of that would be, it could be considerably less than our original plan. It could also involve money down the line to replace the roof. There could be ongoing maintenance costs. So those kinds of things, we really need to spend some time looking at the pros and cons, and where do we get the most bang for our buck, knowing, again, that we want this project, this building, to last for many, many decades. The lot next door was an issue that some people raised, and felt that there needs to be maybe some more clarity around all of the efforts that the select board put into acquiring that piece of property. And, you know, there is a lot of misconceptions out there that the board was looking at an appraisal that was the town appraisal, and indeed, you know, the, the select board had, had obtained an independent appraisal of that property. So there, I, I think there were a lot of, a lot of points raised around the communic, again, the communication aspect, that some questions are already, have already been answered for new people who've come forward and were somewhat skeptical initially, and then the more information they received, they're saying, you know, gee, maybe this makes sense and we ought to take a look at that. And how can we better communicate the reasons for making certain decisions to the community? So, you know, I think it was a really wide-ranging discussion. We came out with, you know, a number of questions, we'll again, meet again next week, April And kind of go for the, from there, we will want to get in our own heads straight what the questions are, people will be doing, and already have, Barry did some great research. But there will be a time, as I think I said the last time we met as a board, that this committee will, I think, come before the, the select board with a recommendation to expend some funds on either getting certain questions answered by professionals, I'm not quite sure yet, but, and our hope is, you know, we're trying to shoot for the idea of a November bond vote, again. And we'll see where it takes us.
Did you elect a chair?
We did not elect a chair. We did not.
Rep. Chris?
Well, you know, I had put together an agenda, and I made it very clear to the folks there. This is basically just an outline for our own, you know, just to give us a little bit of a stepping off point. You know, I felt, at least in the initial, and Barry and Kenny, you know, maybe either one of you can step in here, it, to me personally, it just didn't feel quite right at that moment to say, okay, let's appoint a, a board chair.
This was more of an information gathering session?
Well, and again, you know, people, you know, we really were initially, let's all introduce each other, you know, be ourselves. And maybe that will happen? I'm not sure that it, it has to happen. Margie was there, and, you know, I certainly have no problems taking notes, doing minutes, trying to throw an agenda together.
But who conducted the meeting?
I think we all kind of did. I mean, maybe I tried to keep people, Margie and I, maybe we tried to keep people on task in terms of at least making sure we identified some of this. So it may happen, it probably will happen in, in the next meeting. It will certainly, you know, my intent was to bring it up. But do you have any thoughts, Barry, along those lines?
Well, no, I'll just make an observation. It was clear that you had put the agenda together, and yet, as soon as the discussion got started, Ken made a comment, and then Lon jumped in, and he didn't want to do things the way you had set them up. And he had his own agenda, which wasn't written.
Right.
And I could see a little bit of, a little bit of this between you and he.
We pulled it back to this.
But...
Was it Karen, Karen, while ultimately?
No, no, I don't think it was a win-win situation.
Oh, no.
It was, it was a situation where I think, I think we accomplished what we needed to do that night. And I would even wonder whether we should not call the person a chairperson, but a facilitator, maybe.
I think that's a really...
And maybe it could be anybody.
Yeah.
It could be Margie, if she's willing.
Yeah.
Or, but I think we do need somebody to, to sort of, somebody who has some experience running meetings, so we don't get, you know, stay there for too long and then not get things done.
Yep.
When, as you all know, who had that opportunity and responsibility, it's a real...
Kind of helped to shepherd the process along, basically.
Exactly.
Craig?
Yes.
I've kind of run into a couple of things since the meeting. One would be, does anybody know how much salt we use in a year?
Yes, we can get that, Margie and/or Terry can...
That would be good, because one of the building, or the salesman I talked to about salt sheds, that if you give them the, the amount of tonnage, they can figure how big a building you need.
Yes, that's readily available. Talk to either Terry or...
600 tons.
Six hundred tons.
How much? 600 ton?
Of, of salt.
And roughly the same amount of sand?
No, no.
You use a lot more sand.
A lot more sand.
Sand, I'd have to go look up.
But, yeah. The salt is 600 tons.
Okay, because if, you know, you do realize that if you could get that sand under cover, that you're going to use probably less than 50% as much salt in the sand.
I know that there's, I know that there is a...
Because once you get it covered, you just, I mean...
It starts cutting, your, your yearly expenditure goes down by covering.
Yeah, because it, it doesn't have the snow and the rain to fall on it to dilute it.
Right.
So then it'll freeze up.
Exactly.
Why we, yeah.
And you can, I mean, you could have a smaller building, like you could put all your sand here, or your salt here, and then mix your salt and sand as you need it. Because if you're, if you're sanding the roads and it's above 32 degrees, you're an idiot, you use salt and sand anyway.
Right, exactly.
And it goes right down through it.
Right. Yeah, so that, so that information is available.
Yeah.
Well, you've got it, but...
Well, that, yeah, that would be good.
Isn't this all, sorry, not to try to stifle anybody, but this is all what should be brought up in the meeting?
Yeah.
That's, that's right.
But in answer to the question, that is available.
Okay, yeah, because I, I'll have to get that.
And that way, you have some more information to bring back next week.
Right, that's what I'm saying.
Right.
So, you know, again, unless Barry and, and Ken have anything else to add, that's, that's sort of a summary of, of...
So, I want to just tell the board that I think that one of the, one of the conclusions we came to was that if we're going to try to head for another budget issue on the November ballot, we only have till August to do that. And that doesn't give us a great deal of time. So we did make the point, and I think everybody was in agreement, that we don't have a lot of time to waste on this, and we really got to get the ball rolling. And I think what we really need to do in the next meeting is to set up a timeline. And I made the recommendation, and I would stand by it, that we set up a series of articles. We want to know what we want to cover, what we think the townspeople need to know from this committee, and then feed it to them in a way, through the, through the banner and whatever other means we choose, maybe a website or something else, so that they get it in a timely way and can, and can participate and make up their minds about it.
Right.
One of the suggestions, I think it had come to the board, actually to this board, prior to our setting up the committee, was, was the idea of a survey. And the sense was, if we can get some initial information, enough information out to the community, so that they would feel informed when they receive a survey, that might be a good way to approach it, so.
That, I think that you're, you're on track, that those, that thought process is, is key, with the timeliness and, and making sure that the communication is being handled, you know, in a fashion that people can be involved on a quasi-educated basis, and be provided.
Right.
Is there anything further that you want to add?
No.
Ken?
No.
Alrighty, thank you for that. We'll look forward to, at our next meeting, to what comes from your meeting next week. Next item is the town administrator's report.
We have the fire department's annual dinner invitations for you all, Saturday, April 20th. Reannounced, oh, never announced. We have, I've made you all aware that we're having a website meeting. That's April 5th, next Friday, 1:30 PM at Cole. That's the first chance for our website developer to sit down and hear from staff and officials collectively about any other thoughts about website content and function. The issue of used oil had been plaguing me, and now I have called TAM. They're actually helping me look into a way of trying to get rid of that used oil, and I think they're going to be coming back with costs that are about a third of what I'd had so far.
That would be good news.
Keep my fingers crossed, but I don't, I'm not sure. We're also going to be working with TAM as managers of the operational end to see if there is a place up there where we could store the fluorescent bulbs, if we collect them. And, and the issue would be, how frequently would we, as a town or as a transfer station, collect those? Maybe quarterly, only biannually, the same day?
Margie, excuse me a second. If you're talking about getting those fluorescent bulbs or, I don't know what you call it. If there's mercury in those, are we looking at it, getting ourselves into some kind of a contamination?
If they're broken, you have to be very, very careful.
Yeah, that's what I mean.
But, but the state has a new program open to all, all towns.
Mm-hmm.
Anybody that has, thinks they have room to store these...
Yeah.
You collect them, and you, you bag them, you line your, your boxes with a liner, you collect them carefully, and then the state personnel comes and collects them and takes them away.
Mm-hmm.
So, you're right. I mean, there, there is an exposure, a liability to the town.
There is some risk, but by the same token, we're also, the more that we're able to do that, the less likely we are to have the problem that we had, that we talked about at the beginning of the...
Well, yeah, well, you're better to have it in one spot than scattered everywhere.
Yeah, dumped in the woods and smashed in the wood, yeah.
Yeah, right, exactly.
I've had a call from my animal control officer. She recently had to deal with farm animals at large. We have no place to impound farm animals. And, it didn't last for long, but it raises the whole issue of what to do in those cases. So we need to find... So we need to find a very large kennel box for very large animals. I don't know. It might even be an elephant someday. When you read in the press what is getting lost, I mean, out of cages elsewhere.
Oh, Lord.
I think anybody who lost an, a farm animal would want it back.
They did. They finally got it back. I hear we have goats on Maple Hill that like to join you when you're out for your walk. They just follow you. Working on personnel issues.
That's bad. I'm sorry.
They're very cute though. They are very cute. Lobby ears and all. Okay, I'm working on the job description. I will be meeting with our Howard Park Maintenance Person and we'll be talking over the role and expansion of roles and job description for Howard Park.
When is that?
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow.
Let's see, we've got grant announcements, which I have forwarded on to our Emergency Coordinator and Fired Chief about the dry hydrant grant program, and there's a neat little new grant. We don't have to do a lot, as a matter of fact. I don't have to hardly lift my fingers except just a sign on a dotted line saying, "We would like the help of the Regional Planning Commission and the V Trans." What they've done is come up with hazardous rural roads grants. They nominate two roads each year for each town, those, maybe this is year one of the grant, that they think are dangerous. They've identified White Creek Road and a section of Buck Hill Road. They're rural connectors that have an accident history that is higher than usual. And so what they can do is they provide a state engineer to come down and make recommendations for either improved signage, maybe that would be at least cost, maybe the more expensive side, it might be realignment, let's say, which would then go into the grant process for paving or whatever. But with these very teeny tiny grants, they will provide the engineer to meet with us and then they'll make their recommendations for future improvements. And in most cases, there's absolutely no local match to get the service. The only other announcement was that, which Joe, it really isn't aside from the water issues discussed tonight, is that we, the issue of the allocation of gallons from North Bennington to Shaftesbury, which is written into our permit of operations, is yet being discussed because the state did not agree with North Bennington's allocation to Shaftesbury.
Really?
Correct. So that our certification of operations is now delayed. And so that conversation is still ongoing.
Because they felt that we should be entitled to more water?
Probably to more.
A greater...
And so the next, I love to keep an eye out for when the next North Bennington Water Department meeting is just a sit and just to learn more about that.
Yeah, I agree. Because that's an important one. Because, you know, we have a situation with our downtown here. I mean, if the Planning Commission is looking for future growth in our next town plan, you can't have growth if you're being told...
That's right.
That you're limited in terms of the allocation of water.
Exactly.
So that's a, that's a very big issue for us.
That's why I was bringing it up.
Yeah.
It's usually infrastructure that's going to drive your...
That's right.
...uphill to the ground.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you, Margie. Does any member of the board have other business to bring to the table this evening? Ken? Carl?
No.
Or Karen?
Two things. One, Margie, or is it on your radar in terms of fuel bids?
Yes, it's on my radar.
Okay. And the other question had to do with our summer hour. I shouldn't call it, you know, it's not really summer hours, it's seasonal hours as the days get longer. I'm not quite sure when that is, when sunrise is at this point, and this has to do with the road crew going to 10-hour days to capture the light, you know, the increased light that we have.
It's not until late, at least. We should decide when.
It's kind of varied because in the past, the past road foreman used to just sort of decide when it would be and...
Let's ask, let's, what do we mean with Terry?
Let's add that to the 15th.
Yeah. And we'll come back with the, by then we'll know, we can set that up at the 15th.
Right.
I will look back on when we started it last year.
Yeah, I mean, it seems to me that we surely shouldn't begin until we know we're finished with any potential storms, winter storms, because we don't have to get into any kind of overtime because...
It's generally, it's generally run from May till around the 1st of October in round numbers, but we'll tie it down.
Past years, it used to be April 1st. They went on April 1st, so...
Yeah, wow.
Yeah.
Anyway.
The past is the past, huh? So anyway, I just wanted to be sure that nothing happened without our knowing.
Okay.
And that's it for me.
Margie?
You'll be happy to know, I think our fuel costs, I think we meet out well, having a fluctuating price this year.
It's a good year to have that happen.
For diesel.
Oh, for diesel. I was going to say, no, we had a set, oh, for diesel, good, good.
Yeah.
I have nothing further for other business. The topic that I had, we've discussed earlier in the meeting, so we're good with that. Minutes from March 11th, have all those been circulated for all members to review?
They went out with your packet. The minutes of the 18th did not.
Do you know which email that was in?
One of your...
Or actually, maybe it went before, before the actual...
I think they were before.
I think it was just a day or two before that.
Thank you all for coming.
Thank you.
Good night.
Good night. Maybe...
Have you not had a chance to review them? Karen?
I'm sorry, I did not, I did not. I saw that April 8th, I mean, the March 18th.
Those just came...
But March 11th was your organizational meeting.
I just didn't see the...
We did the bid award for the brush truck body.
Carl and Ken?
Opened the, opened the bids for the cemetery.
Didn't know if you knew what packet they came in. Oh, there we go. Sorry, minutes, okay.
March 18th, 6:00 AM, 6:00 PM.
No, March 11th we're looking at.
Oh, March 11th? Well, that, I don't remember if I saw that.
They, but we got those a week or so ago.
Oh.
I believe.
Yes, we did. Under separate...
Yeah, yeah. Here they are, Karen.
I can see if I can find it here.
Give you a moment.
What was the title of the, of this message?
I think it was 3/11, Organizational Meeting, Minutes, 3/11.
Organizational Meeting.
Yeah.
No.
Shall, would you prefer that we have them to the next meeting and do them along with those? Do you have a chance to review them first?
That's okay.
Or do you want to just look at them?
I can just look at them.
The, you have the election of officers.
Yeah.
And Item 7, there was a brief discussion on the new town garage status. Carl, that's where you first brought up the idea of forming an ad hoc committee. And then after withdrawing the motion eventually, bid award for the brush truck body, bid opening, and the cemetery.
I remember that well.
And there's a whole series of prices and all that.
Yeah.
And we approved the liquor license for Shaftesbury Store.
Okay, that's just warrants. Okay, fine, got no problem.
Yep. So I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of March 11th.
11th, second.
Is there any further discussion regarding those minutes?
No.
Ken, any?
Those good.
Okay. There being no further discussion, all those in favor approving the minutes of Monday, March 11th, the Select Board, signified by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? Motion carries unanimously. All right. Warrants, we've got a couple here. First of all, check warrant number 28, in the amount of, relatively small this week, Motion to approve?
Second.
Large ticket items. We have a salt purchase from American Rock Salt, an amount of $1,205.29. Several orders of items from Daily's, Shoulderstone, an amount of $2,071.68. Sand, an amount of $1,194.16. Green Mountain Power, $1,027.91. Several fuel expenses, HL Fuel for $1,825.19. Another from HL Fuels for $1,340.52. An order from John Ray &amp; Sons for $1,090.36. And then one additional one from John Ray &amp; Sons for $1,498.68. Repair order to Morse Repair for $1,373.20. Do you know what that...
Now, all of that work was about tires. Tires for some vehicle.
Yeah.
I'm not sure which one it was.
One of the, one of the trucks that they had, they've been having a recurring issue of the steel...
The rims.
The rims, or the wheels breaking.
Wheel rims?
They actually break the centers out of the, out of the rims, or out of the wheels. So what I believe, what that ties to then, I believe that Terry was able to find some cast aluminum wheels, which hold up conceivably better than the steel wheels, so, and he got them at a pretty reasonable price. So he was able to buy a set of those so that it allows us, we outfitted one truck with those and then it allows them the ones that were on, we have some extras now of the steel ones to work through as they, in case they break further, so...
Was there any explanation why them rims cracked or broke?
No.
You'll have to ask him.
The answer is, there is a reason, I don't remember what it is.
Overloading.
Could be.
It's possible.
I know, because I got it on my own pickup.
Mountain Air Assessor, $2,088.54. The Water Department, E.J. Prescott &amp; Son, $1,861.84. And the remaining items are all under $1,000.
He's second.
Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor, approval of check warrant 28, signified by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, next one. This is payroll warrant. What number is it? Payroll warrant, 38, in the amount of $6,913.13. I have a second?
Second.
I will note that this is one, this actually was the off-week payroll warrant. Karen signed this warrant as we need to be done so they could be paid, so we're just affirming this now. Any further discussion?
Ratifying it.
What?
Ratifying.
Ratifying, yes.
What a great one.
Ratifying. If there's no further discussion, all those in favor, signified by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? Most unanimously. Last but not least, payroll warrant 39, an amount of $11,661.72.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Karen also was able to sign this one for the same reason. So we're ratifying this now. There being no further discussion, all those in favor, signified by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Extentions? Most unanimously. According to my notes, that is the last item of business for tonight. I have a motion to adjourn once we sign. All in favor?
Hurry up.
Please. Thank you.